Gil Reyes reports on this exercise in community building.
It's a chance for the Valley's growing legion of amateur cyclists to get together.
My friend Michael and all my other friends are here, too.
And do it mostly worry-free, thanks to LAPD escorts.
If we come to an intersection where we have a red light, we're gonna try and stop the traffic, but if you see something that's not safe, please do not be afraid, call it out. Somebody yell out, you know, "Traffic, traffic, something going on up ahead."
Over 100 cyclists took part in the West Valley Community Bike Ride. The eight-mile tour through Woodland Hills and surrounding areas began at the District Office of Councilman Bob Blumenfield.
Raising awareness about bicycle infrastructure that's needed throughout the San Fernando Valley, the city of Los Angeles. We're building community and we're having a good time.
The ride introduced many cyclists to popular, safe routes, or routes considered safest because there's less traffic and because they're supported by bicycle infrastructure like bike lanes. An important tip learned today: Try using Van Alden Avenue when pedaling through the area, and avoid heavily congested Tampa Avenue and Reseda Boulevard.
We've got bicycle groups, Rotary Clubs, Neighborhood Councils, LAPD, all coming together to make this into a successful community event.
So why you do this?
Just for the fun of it. Why else would I do it?
Cyclists also got a chance to scout areas to determine where infrastructure is needed, so planners can consider adding them somewhere down the road. In Woodland Hills, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Organizers behind the highly-successful Seek La Via are also considering a San Fernando Valley route in 2015. In this week's list of things to do, a free film screening about the story of an American legend, the LGBT People of Color Film Festival, and a Japanese Flower Arrangement exhibit. As part of African-American Heritage Month in the city of Los Angeles, the Eagle Rock Branch Library will be screening the movie "The True Story of an African-American Legend" on Friday, March 7th, from 3:00 to 5:15 p.m. History was made in 1947 when Jackie Robinson broke the professional baseball race barrier to become the first African-American Major League Baseball player of the modern era. The Eagle Rock Branch Library is located at 5027 Casper Avenue. The event is free. Call 323-258-8078 for details. Fusion, the LA LGBT People of Color Film Festival, takes place Friday and Saturday, March 7th and 8th, at the Egyptian Theater, which is located at 6712 Hollywood Boulevard in Hollywood. Fusion is the only multicultural, gender-inclusive, people-of-color film festival that spotlights the diversity of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community. Times vary, for ticket and schedules, go to outfest.org. The Japanese-American Cultural and Community Center in Little Tokyo presents the first Ikebana, or Flower Arrangement, exhibition in its Spring 2014 season, Bamboo and Petals, on Saturday and Sunday, March 8th and 9th, at its George J. Doizaki Gallery, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Admission is free. There will also be a reception and Ikebana demonstration from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. on Saturday. The event will feature the works of three distinct flower schools from the Los Angeles Ikebana Chapter, Sogetsu, Ike Nobo, and Ohara Ryu, organized in memory of the victims of the Tohoku earthquake. The Japanese-American Cultural and Community Center is located at 244 South San Pedro Street in Little Tokyo. For more information, call 213-628-2725. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. It's an annual event some of the city's older residents look forward to attending every year, and this year, the Snowball Dance was attended by close to 1,000 of the city's eager seniors. What started in a small El Sereno auditorium has evolved into something much bigger at the Weston Bonaventure Hotel.
Who's here from Boyle Heights?
The annual Winter Bash hosted by Councilmember Jose Wezar is well-attended by 800 members of his council district, which encompasses downtown, El Sereno, Boyle Heights, Highland Park, Eagle Rock, and Glassell Park.
The month of February, which is a month of love and friendship, but it's also a way of giving thanks to our seniors who have given us so much love and care throughout our lives, and the seniors love this.
A great meal, a chance to socialize, and raffle prizes are what make this 7th Annual Senior Snowball a hot ticket.
Friendly people, a lot of friendly people, and we get together with nice friends that we have, you know, and everything, the food and everything is real nice.
Forget your problems, you know, come and enjoy yourself.
A photo booth, complete with costumes and wigs, brought out the playful side of the young at heart, but it was the promise of a night of dancing that brought out many of the city's seniors.
I love it. We have so much fun, and, you know, I might dance off a pound. If the city can afford it twice a year would be wonderful, because some of these people don't even get out very often, because it's seniors. I'm the president of our club, and I'd like to have more things to take our members to.
For a lot of these seniors, they like to come out and strut their stuff on the dance floor. They like to meet other people, and we look forward to it every year.
Everything is nice here. I like everything about it. The only thing is, I don't dance.
Ms. Anita Morales, there's always next year, so get your dancing shoes ready for the next senior snowball. Live music, as it is every year, was provided by Chico, a popular Eastside band that plays everything from classic jazz, swing, and pop standards while mixing in some Latin-flavored music. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Bulky item pickup? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Every day, our brave troops and their families stand up for us.
For years, we've asked so much of so few.
Now, we have a chance to serve these heroes.
To give time, offer comfort, or lend a hand.
To ease the burden on a military family.
Let's honor their service by volunteering ours.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering your taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning. Shhh. If you would please take your seats. Today is Tuesday, March 4th. I'd like to welcome you to City Hall. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonin, Busquets, Ondridio, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Carras, Correia, Labange, Martinez, Oferro, Parks, Price, Wesson, 11 members present a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Parks moves, Bonin seconds, next.
Commitment to resolutions for approval.
Martinez moves, Corretz seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, we will be led in our flag salute today by Ms. Martinez, so if everybody could please rise for our flag salute, please rise.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Items 1 through 3 are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that Item 1J may be received and filed as much as the lien has been partially rescinded and paid off.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Do we have cards?
Cards on Item 1.
Okay, so let's hold Item 1, and now we can vote on the other. No specials from the members? Mr. Bonin? Okay, we're not there yet. Okay, so I think we're voting Madam Clerk on, what, 2 and 3?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Corretz?
I wanted to call 1G special, but...
Well, 1 is, we've held 1, right?
Oh, you have held, nevermind.
Yes. Okay, so let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next section. I know Mr. Bonin wanted to hold Item 4. He wants to call Item 4 special, so we'll set that aside. Mr. Buscaino?
Item number 9, please.
9, for Joey B. Members, any other? Okay, what about... So, I guess we can prepare to vote on the remaining items. Mr. Buscaino? Okay, so let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Items 35 through 40 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Any card? Mr. Labange?
Track me.
I did not hear.
Sometimes there's a track me, and sometimes you get out of the blocks faster. I need to do 32. I apologize. I was looking at the numbers and it moved so fast.
Okay, so what we'll do is, when we finish with this section, I'll reconsider 32. So, cards on 35 through 40?
Cards on 35 through 40.
Okay, so now let's go back to Item, I believe it was 32. Mr. Labange wants to have some discussion on this item.
Yeah, briefly.
You ready to have that discussion now?
Right now.
Do we have cards on this item?
Public hearing has been held for Item 32.
It's been satisfied. Okay, so now, members, we're gonna vote for reconsideration on Item 32. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now that item is before us, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, members. I strongly support this concept, not have cellphone use in an airplane. When you're in an airplane, I think it's very communal that we're all together for safe travel, and I think it's very important. Does anyone not support safe travel in the air? Raise your hand. Does anyone not support after you land? Sure, you could use your phone, but you don't want to hear somebody talking all the time, right? So, anybody have a show of hands back there? This is public comment by hand. No hands up, so they all support me, Mr. President. I ask for an aye vote on this issue here, to keep the airs free of cellphone use as you're in flight from point A to point B for safe travel. Thank you. An aye vote.
Okay, Mr. Labange, you know, Tom, you know that's like in football, taking points off the board.
That's okay.
Okay, so we'll try to put your points back on.
Thank you so much.
Let's vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That's LAX.
Fourth with? Mr. Bonin, are you ready with your presentation? If you... Oh, wait, hold tight, Mr. I. What do we have, Madam Clerk?
On the supplemental agenda, Item 41 is an item which public hearing has been held.
Okay, and you said Item 41?
Yes.
Members, let's prepare to vote. Mr. Blumenfield, you want to hold that? Okay, so now let's move on to the other item.
Item 42 is an item which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Do we have cards on that item?
No.
Okay, then, without objection, that item is now before us. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now we're finished with our agenda. Let's move to Mr. Bonin now. Mr. Bonin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Come on, a little bit closer. I am here this morning because I want us to acknowledge and appreciate someone who is simultaneously very cool, very determined, and perhaps a little crazy. I am here with Eob Tesama, and I have him here today because he's an incredible and accomplished athlete and a neighborhood leader on the West Side. This Sunday, as most of you know, LA will host the 29th LA Marathon, and more than 25,000 runners from across LA and across the world will engage in one of the most grueling trials in all of sports, 2.6 miles of a foot race. One of those runners getting ready for Sunday's race is Eob, who is a local running legend who has already completed a mind-blowing 51 marathons in his lifetime. Yes, 51 marathons, 20 of them right here in LA. He made a commitment to himself two decades ago, pledging that he would complete 50 marathons before he turned 50 years old. He had a 20-year plan, and he accomplished it. This weekend will be number 52. This was not an easy commitment to make, as you might imagine. At the time, before he did his first one, he was a semi-pro soccer player who'd previously played at USC, but he didn't have any conventional training as a long-distance runner. So, at the age of 30, he ran his first marathon here in LA, and as I said just a few months ago, in December, he completed his 50th. Then, he ran another one in January, and this Sunday, as I said, his 52nd. His running accomplishments are impressive, but what inspires me about him is how he gives back to the neighborhoods in Los Angeles. Throughout his decades of marathon training, he's been actively involved in community-based sports around LA. He served as a pace leader for the local Nike Runners Training Program, Club Run LA, where he was instrumental in establishing running programs for residents around downtown LA and Boyle Heights, and he's currently director of the Marina Del Rey Track Club on the West Side. His work with the community extends beyond his service as a running mentor and a coach. He's also a running historian, and he's lectured on Ethiopian running so that others could be inspired by the heroes of his ancestral home, like he has been throughout his career. I'm very happy to welcome Eob here to counsel today to congratulate him on achieving his 50 marathons goal and to wish him well in his 52nd this weekend. So, please join me in wishing him and all of Sunday's marathoners good luck in the upcoming race.
Thank you, Honorable Bonin. Thank you, Honorable President Wesson, and distinguished members of the city council. First and foremost, please allow me to give thanks to my creator who has made this event and all other special events possible in my life. A lot of people say that marathoning is a lonely journey, but none of this 26-mile journey would have been made possible without the support and undying motivation given to me, first and foremost, by my loving family extending their unlimited support, my running sponsor, Sketches Performance Division, my running club, Marina Del Rey Running Club, and all sorts of other peoples and entities that have taken this 20-year journey along with me. I run inspired by my heroes and heroines from the ancestral land of Ethiopia. Legends such as Abbebe Bikila, Mamawoldi, Merusiftar, and of course, the legendary Haile Gavrisilasi are all inspirational in my life, as well as all the ordinary people that have basically pounded the pavements along with me doing extraordinary things. Thank you so much for granting me this opportunity. This is truly, truly a special event in my life, and a lot of people ask me what I'll do and whether or not I'll be retiring after accomplishing my 20-year goal of running 50 marathons by age 50. And I like to quote a portion of my favorite pastor, Cecil Murray's quote that he made one day. "I never retire my feet. I just retread them." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
Mr. Bonin, what a special person that you have here, and I wanted to congratulate you, because running is really a full-body effort. And I also wanted to recall the late great Tom Bradley, who along with the late great John Farrell, brought the Olympic Games here in '84, and those games were the first games that allowed a women's marathon and also the boom of running and the marathon of Los Angeles itself, so it's so special. What's your favorite part of the run?
It's my citywide tour, so I love every bit of it.
All right, good, good. Put him up on the Los Angeles Tourism Board. Put you on the commission. Thank you, Mr. President. Good job.
I believe Mr. Buscaino is conferring with his staff. Are you about to announce you're gonna do 20 marathons in 10 years? No? All right. All right. I just wanted to give you the opportunity to announce that if that were the case.
And he's gonna run his backwards. Anyway, congratulations to you. Let's give him another round of applause. That's a major accomplishment. Mr. Parks?
On another item, we'd like to see if we could get item twenty from Friday's special agenda, CF number thirteen dash oh four five five reconsidered today so that we can vote, unanimous vote, so we can move forward on that charter, implementing those charter amendments for Charter Amendment P.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, what do we need to do at this point to bring that before this body?
First, council should vote on reconsideration.
Okay, now we're gonna vote on reconsideration, members. Let's, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, so that item is now before this body, and Mr. Parks, we'll vote on it later, or you want to go?
I think we should go now, we should have enough people here.
So then let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Ms. Martinez?
Oh, fourth with.
Fourth with on Mr. Parks's item.
Thank you, Tom, always a gentleman. Colleagues, today we pay tribute to Women's History Month. This month, we celebrate the many victories women have fought and won, such as the right for education, the right to vote, and the right for equal pay. We celebrate women like Susan B. Anthony, Harriet Tubman, Sonia Sotomayor, and Sally Wright. But here in Los Angeles, we have many incredible leaders and young women can admire. As a little girl, I grew up admiring Councilwoman Joy Picas and now Supervisor Gloria Molina, and I imagined the possibility of one day filling in their shoes. I challenged myself to live up to their legacy and encourage the next generation of women to lead in Los Angeles. In our city, the Commission on Status of Women is planning a variety of celebrations throughout our city celebrating women. Throughout March, I look forward to their work on events including the Picturing Power Art Exhibit and the ribbon-cutting ceremony and unveiling of Mount St. Mary's Report on the Status of Women and Girls in California. For myself, I am especially excited to announce that during Women's History Month, I will be launching a Ready for Women initiative for neighborhood meetings, to meeting with neighborhoods and potential women electeds who aspire to lead and to one day run for office. I am committed to reaching out to women throughout the city to make sure they understand that they have a right to sit at the same table as I do, and to encourage them to one day run for office. Colleagues, thank you so much for the work that you do in collaborating and empowering women in your districts. We must help the future generations to understand that gender equality is a normal part of our society. And maybe one day, we will no longer need a month to celebrate women's accomplishments, but we can do and recognize and understand women every single day. Thank you very much. And with me, I have wonderful representatives from our Commission on the Status of Women. We have our President, Araceli Campos, and we also have our Vice President, Rebecca Nunberg, thank you very much for coming, and Patricia Villasenor as well.
Did you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez and City Council. It's been an honor working with you so far, Councilmember Martinez, and we look forward to more ahead to the rest of the City Council. We have an all-new commission on the status of women, and we really look forward to meeting with you and getting to know you in the next few months. We are an impact-oriented commission, and we really want to make sure that the work we do benefits the women and girls in your district. We know we all have a shared agenda to strengthen the economic engine in the city of Los Angeles, and that women are a huge part of that success, so we really look forward to working with you. I wanted to introduce you to the Commission on Status of Women's Executive Director for Commissions of Community Engagement for the Housing Community Investment Department, Patricia Villasenor, and I wanted to introduce you to our newly-elected Vice President, Commissioner Rebecca Nunberg.
Thank you, Araceli. Hi, Council. It is an honor to be serving this great city, and especially in the role of Commissioner on the Status of Women. I just wanted to let you know that I look forward to meeting each and every one of you very soon. Patricia, the Executive Director, will be setting up appointments so that we can meet with you, so we can work on gender issues and help you with gender issues in each of your council districts. I'm looking forward to developing great relationships with each and every one of you. Thank you so much. Oh, you know what, should we talk about the art show too? Oh, one last thing.
Go right ahead.
Oh, thank you so much, Councilwoman. We, as Councilwoman Martinez mentioned, we are having our very first Commission on the Status of Women art show. It's on the bridge. We invite all of you, we will be having a reception at nine AM on the eighteenth, and I look forward to seeing all of you at the show. It's gonna be fantastic. Thank you so much. It's called Picturing Power. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's give them another round of applause. As our city photographer, Tom Labange.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Labange. I can always count on you.
Members, if I could just have your attention for a moment. One of our colleagues, who I do not see. Where's Mr. Englander? Okay, Mr. Englander, maybe we'll do this a little later. All right, so this, oh, wait a minute, we, is there an Englander sighting? There is. It is my understanding that not too long ago, you have been with the city of Los Angeles for ten years. Is that not accurate, or is the information that I received, I got it from Buscagino, so I don't know how credible it is, but it's, what I'd like to do, Mr. Englander, before...
Mr. President, if, since you've been president, it only feels like a day.
Well, it has been ten years, and I congratulate your service to the entire city of Los Angeles, your service with me as a partner, so I'd like to present you with your ten-year pin. If you come, let's give Mitchell a round of applause. He's been here ten years. And this, this pin designates that, yeah, it was under Presentations, it was under, so let's see if we could, the old man can put this on.
He's gonna stick me.
Purposely gonna stick it. Give it up for Mitchell, he's been here ten years. Congratulations, and again, thank you for your service. Madam Clerk, we have commissioners?
Yes, item four, called special by Councilwoman Bonin.
Okay, why don't Michael, you want to just bring up item four? In fact, you know what we can do? We can do four and five together, if that's, we are, in fact, five is already gone, so let's do four. Five has already been approved, so now let's defer to Mr. Bonin, and we'll do item four. Commissioner, if you could please come forward. Mr. Donovan, have a seat, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is an appointment to the West LA Area Planning Commission, which encompasses all of my district and part of Mr. Coretza's. Mr. Donovan has actually served previously on the West LA APC and is being named to fill a new position. Partially, I called this special because Tom's family is here, and I actually wanted them to hear me say a few words about Tom. I have known Mr. Donovan for, I guess, eight years, even before he was on the APC. He is a member of the West LA Neighborhood Council and is a voice of the Neighborhood Councils on the Area Planning Commission. I just want to say, I think that Mr. Donovan is one of the strongest and fiercest advocates for neighborhoods that we have on the area planning, the APC system, and I gotta say, I think you're the very model of what an APC Commissioner should be. You read every single word. As far as I know, you go and see and look at every single project, and you always lead a thoughtful discussion, and I'm glad to have you on the APC. I'm wondering, since we have you here today, if you could just say a few words about what your philosophy is. I know you're a lawyer, so you understand that there's a balance to be struck between what the neighborhood wants and what's legally possible, and if you could just share a bit about how you navigate that.
Thank you, Councilmember. First of all, I would like to thank Mayor Garcetti for reappointing me. I would like to thank Councilman Huizar and the Plum Committee for recommending my confirmation. I would like to thank this council for considering me, and of course, I want to thank Councilmember Bonin for her support. Last but not least, I'd like to thank my wife, who tolerates the amount of time that I spend on these commission matters, and also my son Ian, who has come to see his old man in front of the seat of power. What I would try to bring to the Planning Commission, one of the most important things, I think, is to bring consistency to the planning process, at least at the commission level. Every citizen in this city, whether they be residents, or property owners, or business people, or developers, has the right to expect, know what to expect from our planning process. And so I think that's very important at the commission level. The other thing is that it's important that the city follows rules, especially regarding the code and zoning matters, and also the community plans, which are very, very important to me and are preeminent in our zoning plan. Those are the two areas that I really try to concentrate on, the West LA APC, which I am told by the city attorney is the busiest APC in this city, and we have very complicated, as they might say, well-lawyered cases, and I work very hard at it, and I'm very happy to, that the council member appreciates me and that this council is considering my appointment.
Thank you, and I should note, I've never seen such a groundswell of grassroots support for a commission appointment in the city of Los Angeles, so congratulations on that. Our constituents, our mutual constituents really appreciate the work you do. Colleagues, I ask for an aye vote, and a thank you to Mr. Donovan for his continued service to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bonin. The no-speakers on the queue, and Commissioner Donovan Renee Weitzar says thank you from my office for all your extra work and time. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
So ordered. Next item. Forty-one, please.
Item forty-one, called special by Councilwoman Blumenfeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna get CLA to the table as well, but I want to make some comments about this to start. I really want to welcome Westfield and the members of the community who are here today in support of the Village-Westfield-Tupanga Subvention Agreement. This is a very big deal in the West San Fernando Valley. I'm very excited that the Village-Westfield-Tupanga Project is coming to my district. It is going to be a first-class mixed-use development that will be a new major destination for shopping, dining, and investment in the valley. It'll be a positive transformation for the region and for the city. As many of you know, it's going to include upscale retail, boutique specialty shops, personal services, restaurants, a Costco with a members-only fueling station, a community center. It's going to involve investing more than three-hundred-and-thirty-five million dollars into our local economy and create jobs that are very much needed, both good construction jobs and long-term permanent jobs for our local residents. The project's going to raise the property values in the area, attract other investments, and improve the attractiveness as the West Valley as a desirable place to live and do business. It's also going to be the anchor of the Warner Center 2035 Specific Plan, which sets a course for modern planning, green building standards, sustainability, and job creation. You know, many of my colleagues were here when this project came through the entitlement process. In general, I'm very skeptical when it comes to subvention agreements, but I really looked at this one, and I worked with the CLA, and I worked with the developer, and we made some changes to add more accountability to this. And we kicked the tires of it and made it into an agreement that I really feel is a good revenue-sharing agreement with the city. We are creating revenues and taxes where they would not exist before, where there's a big pile of dirt right now, and unless we move something like this forward, we wouldn't have the incredibly exciting project that lays before us. It's expected to generate tens of millions in new net tax revenue for the city. Now, via this partnership, the other exciting thing is that we're gonna get it done in one phase. I know my time is running out on that, but this is an important aspect of it because some of the project has changed in the last six months in terms of the developer dropping the hotel from Phase One, but I wanted to bring that issue up and talk about it because we still fully expect the hotel and office to be in this project. They are there, but the question is when they're gonna be there and moving forward. But the subvention agreement that's before us is a really good deal, and I urge your aye vote, and we have Mr. Miller to present.
Good morning. We'll be brief. I'll give a brief overview, and then Oscar and my staff can provide some detail. What you have before you is compliant with all city policies. The city has been doing these types of transactions since the late nineties. Many of them that you're very familiar with that has, have gotten a lot of attention includes the Ritz-Carlton Marriott, the Warner Grand, Hollywood Highland, some of those. But in addition, though, it's important to note that some of these are used for smaller projects as well, including Chesterfield Square, the Lowry's River Center, Pacoima Plaza, and Midtown Crossing. So there are a variety of projects that have been funded through this mechanism. Page five of our report goes into detail on how we calculate and how we analyze these projects. But what is before you completely protects the existing general fund revenue. There is a demonstrated feasibility gap that without the additional reinvestment of tax revenue, the projects can't happen. Only fifty percent of the net new revenue, net new direct revenue, is going to be reinvested. There are guarantees, again, on the existing general fund. And it's also important to note that as a matter of policy, we only consider direct new revenue. We don't consider the indirects. We don't consider the additional purchasing power from the jobs being created and other issues such as those. So again, you have a very strong agreement before you with a very strong public benefits package, and Oscar can touch on a few of the highlights.
Good morning, Oscar Ishko with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst. The project before you, as mentioned, has undergone a thorough financial analysis by the city's hired consultant, Rosinell Spavichik Group. And what we look at is we look at project feasibility and what the fiscal and economic impacts on the city of Los Angeles are. The results in a report dated February twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen indicate that the project is scheduled to cost approximately three-hundred-and-thirty-five-point-six million dollars to construct, of which we determined that thirty-five-point-six million is the feasibility gap, which is the basis for the city's participation in this process. Based on the report, the projected sales in the next twenty-five years, once the project is constructed and has reached its stabilization in two thousand and seventeen, is to generate approximately ninety-five-point-four million dollars over the twenty-five-year period, which in net present value is about forty-one-point-nine million dollars. Based on city policy, the city is allowed to participate up to fifty percent of those revenues through this subvention process, which means that twenty-point-nine is a supportable amount that we are considering and has been identified in the agreement. There is a provision in the agreement that would allow the developer to continue participating, have the opportunity to continue receiving subvention payments up to twenty-five million dollars, and that's being done in consideration of the feasibility far exceeding the amount that the city is participating. The subvention amount will undergo a construction cost reconciliation... The subvention amount will undergo a construction cost reconciliation process, which at the end of construction completion, we will do an audit of the actual costs to determine if the feasibility remains the same. If the, if there were any cost savings in the construction cost, then the subvention amount would be reduced accordingly. If there is an increase in costs, if they exceed what's been projected, our participation remains the same. So that does not change. On an ongoing basis, there will be an annual true-up process, which is basically an annual reconciliation of the revenues that the project generates on an ongoing basis. We will look at sales receipts, tax reports, bill of sales, all documentation needed to verify what the actual net new revenues have been, that were generated from the project, and then the annual subvention payments will be made accordingly. There is a, there is a schedule of payments that's projected in the report. It's Exhibit K to the agreement, and it basically serves as a guideline for us to follow, to gauge how the project is doing. In the event that the developer exceeds sales projections and they will continue to receive those payments, the maximum amount that they can incur is $25 million in net present value, and that's within the 25-year period. And I think that fully summarizes our participation.
All right, Mr. Englander.
Now, I'll just be brief. While this is a subvention agreement, it really is, what I think was summarized best in the Budget Finance Committee yesterday, is a revenue-sharing agreement. This project, which is already approved, and this is really the financial mechanism to get it going, is a great project. And it started off as an okay project. It started off as a very controversial project, with a lot of people, both in CD-12 and CD-3, very upset and very concerned about the impacts and the traffic, what the mitigations were going to be, what the project was going to look like. And Westfield didn't just step up to work with the community. They really got engaged. And unlike where I've seen in really any other major development project of this size and scale and magnitude, a lot of what we saw, quite frankly, with Staples Centers, when they went out and really worked with the community and led by a lot of the same team members, and I think that's the approach that they took, which was very good. And with that, and it was approved under the last councilmember from CD-3, under Dennis Zine, and did a good job. Bob came in and really crossed the Ts, and I said this yesterday, and dotted the Is, in the financing mechanisms of this project, and made it a great project, one that is financially sound and a great investment, a great partnership. And once again, Westfield, I think, just did a phenomenal job. Like to see more of these kinds of projects brought to the city, particularly to the San Fernando Valley. And one of the things that Mike Bonin said yesterday is that what we ought to do is take this model and go to the county and see if they can get to partner with us because of all the revenue-sharing benefits that they get out of this as well. And I think we ought to take that in the next future project that comes around like this, to start looking at that partnership. I think it was a great idea. But I ask for your eye vote as well and stand proud with Bob and all the work that he's done on this. Thank you.
Mr. Blumenfeld.
Great, thank you. Question about, number of my constituents have been asking about the, the fact that the hotel and the office tower are not in this subvention, whereas they were in the original one. Could you explain the reason the hotel is not included and the city's understanding of the status of the hotel and the office towers going forward?
Well, essentially, the hotel is not included because over the months, it just simply wasn't working. It wasn't penciling out in terms of getting a flag. There were some problems there. So the developer removed it from, from the plan right now. And again, what you're agreeing to is to participate in the building of the project that they are guaranteeing that they are going to build. They desire to build the hotel and want to go forward and do that. If that occurs, then those revenues will come to the city.
Great. Thank you. Mr. President, would it be possible to bring the representative from the project forward? Just had, on this question of the hotel, just on the one lingering question.
Yes, why don't we do that?
If we could have Slary Green from the hotel. And I should, I should say, you know, echoing what Mr. Englander said, you know, Westfield has been a tremendous partner. Come to the table and podium. He's been an excellent partner in this, in really working with the community.
Why don't we, Mr. Blumenfeld, we could bring him to the center table?
If you could come to the table.
Okay.
And as, as I mentioned, he's been an excellent partner in this. And this, this one lingering question that community members have been asking me, I wanted to address directly with you here, which is the, the plan for building the rest of the project, including the hotel and the office tower, in terms of the timeframe when you see that happening.
Okay. Well, first of all, you should know that the, first of all, thank you for your kind words and remarks, and I appreciate being before the council once again on this. You should know that the design of the project, the site plan that we've developed, will allow for the future components, the office and the hotel and the associated parking, to be built in future phases. And, and that's something that, you know, we're excited about doing. We've presented those plans to the planning department, and they have that, and they can see how those phases can be accepted down the road. You know, for us, it's really about the market conditions and when the market conditions are ripe for us to bring those components of the project forward. And, you know, we're always aggressively out there talking to folks, and so I hope that in the near future, very near future, we'll be able to bring those pieces online. But we really depend on the market conditions and, you know, and we hope that things will get better out there.
Great. So the parking in Phase One, we need additional parking for those additional features?
That's correct. That's correct.
Great.
And the plan will allow for that future parking to be built.
Great. Well, well, thank you. And what I'd like to do is, is, I mean, I'm going to ask the developer to be able to come back in 12 months with an update in terms of, of this, and, and actually to amend the report, to request that the developer report back to the council in 12 months and once a year on the status in terms of the hotel and the office.
Okay.
So that we can, there's so much interest in this that we can keep apprised of that. It's such an exciting project, and we're looking forward to working with you. But with, with that small amendment about reporting, I'd like to request an eye vote and move forward on a vote.
Thank you. With that said, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Please welcome a very special group from St. Stephen's Missionary Baptist Church. Please rise. All there from La Puente, California. Pastor Anthony Dockery, we welcome you and enjoy the chamber. And also, please, take time to visit the Tom Bradley Tower. The fog has burned off, and you can look to the east, and maybe you'll see La Puente. Okay.
Anyway, welcome. Thank you for coming, and thank you for that intro, Mr. Labange. We're now going to item 35. Mr. O'Farrell, would you like to set up like, the way you'd like to proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Shh.
Colleagues, last week in my committee that I chair, Arts Parks, Health, Aging, and the Los Angeles River, my committee voted unanimously to support regulating e-cigarettes the same way we do tobacco products in the City of Los Angeles, with the exemption of allowing for vaping lounges, similar to what we have with cigar lounges, consistent with the regulation of tobacco use. I will say that 20-some-odd years ago, our predecessor, Marvin Browdy, stood up in the interest of public health, and the City of Los Angeles made the workplace safer by banning cigarette smoking inside establishments. At that time, I personally worked in a restaurant with a smoking section, and I was very, very happy to see this new sensible law in the City of Los Angeles because myself and my coworkers' health benefited from this regulation. Colleagues, I stand today to make the same argument in relation to the second-hand aerosol that is emitted from vaping on e-cigarettes. What I'd like to do to start this today is to call up Dr. Jonathan Fielding, the Director of Los Angeles County Health, as well as Dr. Lourdes Baiscondi Carbonati, Ph.D., M.P.H., to speak to us today about why this pending ordinance is so critical to the health of Angelenos. Thank you, doctors.
Okay, please, good to see you again, and please proceed.
Thank you very much. Good morning. I'm Dr. Jonathan Fielding. I'm the Health Officer and Director of LA County Health Department, focused on public health. And let me thank you, Council President Wesson, and Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, and the entire council for addressing this important public health issue. We have been in Los Angeles a public health leader, especially in the area of tobacco control and prevention, and in the last 25 years, our collective work has resulted in significant decreases in smoking among adults and youth. However, today, tobacco use still remains the greatest killer in our country, which is preventable. Each year, tobacco kills about 500,000 people in the United States alone. So today, though, we're here to discuss the concern about e-cigarettes and how they contribute to the use of tobacco. Let's start off with what they are. Electronic or e-cigarettes are battery-operated devices that deliver doses of nicotine and other chemicals to the user. Depending on the brand, e-cigarettes typically contain nicotine, propylene glycol or glycerol to produce the vapor, flavoring, and various other additives and contaminants. Some brands have candy flavorings, such as chocolate, fruit, and gummy bears, which appeal to children. E-cigarettes were first introduced in the United States in the period 2006 to 2007, and since then, they've been marketed wildly. I said wildly, widely, but wildly perhaps as well. And we've seen a dramatic increase in the use of e-cigarettes among adult smokers and particularly among youth and young adults. Data from the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention indicate that in the span of just one year, from 2011 to 2012, the percentage of high school students in the U.S. who'd ever used e-cigarettes more than doubled, from less than 5% to 10%, which translates into almost 2 million students. In that same study, of those who had ever used e-cigarettes, nearly 1 in 10 reported never having smoked traditional cigarettes, thus prompting concern that e-cigarettes may be, in fact, a bridge to traditional cigarette smoking among youth. This dramatic rise in e-cigarette use is of great concern to public health officials for at least three reasons, each of which warrants prohibiting their use in public spaces where smoking is currently prohibited. First, safer does not mean safe. Although they are less harmful than traditional cigarettes, some e-cigarettes may pose health risks. Despite some marketing claims that they're a safe alternative to traditional cigarettes and a potential, and a potential quit-smoking aid, vapor from some e-cigarettes have been found to contain potentially toxic chemicals, including formaldehyde, acrylene, some heavy metals such as nickel, lead, and other toxic substances, and volatile organic compounds. Some of the other chemicals found in e-cigarettes, including propylene glycol, the same substance used to make theater smoke, and other flavorings that are recognized as safe food additives, are not known to be safe when repeatedly inhaled into the lungs over time, as is the case with e-cigarettes. Since many of these chemicals are efficiently absorbed from lungs into the blood, they pose potential health risk to the user and for non-users exposed to the vapor. E-cigarettes produce secondhand vapor, that is vapors that others will inhale. These vapors may contain particulate matter and may contain potentially toxic chemicals that can trigger asthma and can make the eyes, nose, throat, and respiratory tract irritated. People in enclosed spaces should simply not be subjected to these risks. The risk to young children and developing adolescents in particular could be significant. In addition, the nicotine solution in some e-cigarettes is sold in a wide variety of strengths that are also unregulated, which means the amount of nicotine in e-cigarette can vary widely and may not be accurately labeled. This raises serious health concerns because nicotine raises blood pressure and heart rate and may increase the risk of birth defects among women exposed during early pregnancy. The second area of major concern is that the marketing tactics and promotion for public use of e-cigarettes could lead to a renormalization of smoking, that is, making smoking more acceptable. Once sold only in mall kiosks and online by independent companies, e-cigarettes are now at least a $1.5 billion industry that has caught the attention of Big Tobacco, which has historically had scant regard for the public health. This raises a major concern because Big Tobacco has lied under oath and obfuscated the truth about tobacco for a very long time. And with Big Tobacco comes big money in the marketing and promotion of e-cigarettes. And because e-cigarettes are unregulated by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, tobacco companies can utilize certain media that have long been unavailable to their traditional cigarette brands since a ban on tobacco advertising on television took place in the early 1970s. They glamorize e-cigarette use with celebrity spokespeople and other marketing strategies, which enhances the potential for use of e-cigarettes to serve as a gateway to traditional cigarette use, particularly, particularly among the most impressionable, which are our youth. As Big Tobacco secures a larger share of the e-cigarette market, it will likely encourage dual use of both e-cigarettes and traditional cigarettes, potentially reducing cessation and increasing harm by prolonging the use of traditional cigarettes. So this threatens to undermine decades of work to protect the public by denormalizing smoking. A powerful tool used in tobacco control, changing the social norm and making smoking tobacco unacceptable, could disappear. This change in social norm has kept children from starting to smoke and has helped motivate adults to make quit attempts. Our third concern is the growing confusion about the permissibility of e-cigarette use in public spaces and the challenges of enforcing existing smoking-free laws, particularly because some e-cigarettes have deliberately been developed to look like traditional cigarettes and, when used, mimic the act of smoking. So here you have, for example, two cigarettes, and I want to ask you from afar to tell me which is which. Which is the e-cigarette and which is the cigarette that has tobacco? Prohibiting the use of e-cigarettes anywhere smoking is currently prohibited, including public spaces and workplaces, such as restaurants and bars, not only provides clear guidance on where e-cigarettes are allowed, but also protects workers in these environments. We have led the way in Los Angeles in protecting workers in these environments from secondhand smoke, and these projections, these protections should now be extended to e-cigarettes as an appropriate precautionary measure. Exemption for any of the areas included in the current smoke-free laws would set a bad precedent for other cities in Los Angeles County, in the state of California, and of course nationally. What happens in Los Angeles will set the standard for what happens in the rest of the country. We recognize that some smokers have reported that e-cigarettes were very helpful in their efforts to quit traditional cigarette use, and we congratulate them and all other smokers who've been able to quit. However, the strength of the scientific evidence regarding the effectiveness of e-cigarettes in getting smokers to quit in comparison to other proven strategies is still not there. We don't know how e-cigarettes contribute to cessation and are concerned that their use may satisfy smokers' nicotine addiction and make it, in some cases, more difficult to quit. So combining the inadequate information about their potential benefits with the unknown safety risks, we cannot endorse e-cigarettes as a tobacco cessation aid in the absence of approval by the FDA for this use. Until the FDA determines how it will exert its authority over e-cigarettes, the regulation of these products then falls mainly in the hands of state and local governments, and it could take years before the FDA decides how to act where the scientific evidence demonstrates the health impact of e-cigarettes, and we just cannot afford to wait. Other cities in Los Angeles County completed revisions or are in the process of revising their smoke-free policies to address e-cigarette use in their communities. Both Huntington Park and Compton have included e-cigarette use in their definition of smoking, prohibiting vaping and smoke-free areas, including public spaces, workplaces, and multi-unit housing complexes. Nationally, Utah, New Jersey, Chicago, and New York City, among other jurisdictions, have taken steps to prohibit the use of cigarettes, of e-cigarettes, in places where smoking is prohibited, and their use is also not allowed on airplanes or on Amtrak trains. Los Angeles is making a critical decision about the health of its residents, and we've always been a leader in protecting the public's health. I don't think we can afford to fall behind. Until more evidence is available on the safety of e-cigarette use, on its impact on inducing teens to begin smoking, and on the potential harm to those who may inhale the secondhand vapor from e-cigarettes, the Los Angeles- vapor from e-cigarettes, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health believes the best approach is a precautionary one, and recommends that the city extend its smoke-free requirements to e-cigarettes in all areas that are already smoke-free, including all workplaces. In addition, we must do everything possible to protect youth from the seductive abstraction of e-cigarettes. The current trend of rising e-cigarette use in this population could be devastating over the coming decades if it serves as a bridge to the widespread adoption of traditional cigarettes. We commend the city for its actions in December to protect youth by passing the ordinance requiring e-cigarette retailers to have licenses and restricting the sale of e-cigarettes in a variety of public settings. But more is necessary. We don't need to risk e-cigarettes undermining a half-century of successful tobacco control and perpetuating the 500,000 deaths that occur each year due to traditional cigarettes. The time for leadership in protecting those in Los Angeles County is now. So while e-cigarettes may reduce harm for current smokers, the potential harms to the entire population, particularly youth and nonsmoking adults, must be addressed. As Dr. Tom Frieden, the Director of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, recently stated in the New York Times, and I quote, "I think the precautionary principle, better safe than sorry, rules here with regards to e-cigarettes," end quote. I want to thank the public health experts and leading tobacco control researchers for their guidance and insights into e-cigarettes. And I spoke with these folks before presenting to the ARCS, Parks, Health, Aging, and River Committee last week and to you today. Dr. David Abrams, who is Executive Director of the Schroder Institute for Tobacco Research and Polity Studies at the American Legacy Foundation. In addition, he led the Office of Behavioral and Social Science Research at the National Institutes for Health. And a point that he's made is that we can't wait for the FDA. The FDA will not, in every case, and will not in any case, regulate where one can smoke. It may regulate the delivery device, but it will not regulate where people can smoke. That is up to state and local government. Dr. Jonathan Sammet was also helpful. He, in addition to writing numerous Surgeon General reports, he serves as the Flora Thornton Chair of the Department of Preventive Medicine at the Kek School of Medicine at USC. He's Director of the USC Institute of Global Health, and he's editor of the recent 50th anniversary of the Surgeon General's Report on Smoking and Health. He has led the Institute for Global Tobacco Control at Johns Hopkins University, and he served on both the National Cancer Advisory Board and the FDA's Tobacco Products Scientific Advisory Committee. Dr. Lourdes Vaisconde Garbanati, Director of Community Outreach and Education at the Institute for Health Promotion and Disease Prevention Research at USC, and she also serves as a committee member of the National Latino Tobacco Control Network. Dr. Helen Calve, who serves as Deputy Health Officer for Orange County Healthcare Agency, and Dr. Philip Gardner, who serves in the Office of the President of the University of California and co-chairs the African-American Tobacco Control Leadership Council. So I thank them for their advice. Thank you for your time and for your willingness to consider this extremely important public health issue.
Thank you, Doctor. Did you want to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity of speaking with you today. I am Dr. Lourdes Vaisconde Garbanati. I'm a professor in the Department of Preventive Medicine, and I'm also a member of the Tobacco Education and Research Oversight Committee. I come today not just on my behalf, but also representing Dr. Jonathan Sammet, who is the Chair of the Department of Preventive Medicine at the University of Southern California. He is also the Chairman of the Clean Air Scientific Advisory Committee of the United States Environmental Protection Agency and of the Food and Drug Administration Tobacco Product Safety Advisory Committee. The reasons for these amendments and why they're necessary is because of the intense popularity and incredible rise in the use of e-cigarettes. This, ladies and gentlemen, is not just an issue that, about protecting youth. This is also an issue about protecting those who are in the workplace. This is also a labor issue. It is also an issue which the FDA will not regulate on because simply the FDA does not regulate on where cigarettes are used. They can regulate on the products and what's contained in them, but they will not regulate where they are used. That, as Dr. Fielding has said, is left to you today and to other cities and states to do so. These devices actually deliver what is called an electronic emission or an aerosol. It is not like the vapor that comes out of your tea kettle. And therefore, we need to understand what the science is, where it is at, and what is contained in many of these products. As Dr. Fielding said, the containment of these products in terms of nicotine and other products varies widely. There is concern that the devices will also affect social norm around smoking and nicotine, which has been a powerful tool for the changes that we have achieved in the last 20 years, not just in Los Angeles, but also in all of California. As summarized in the 50th Anniversary Report of the Surgeon General and the WHO 2013, there is a conclusion that, to date, the safety of e-cigarettes has not been determined, and therefore, a principle of no harm that will benefit just a few is that enough to harm the public's health. Beyond this concern about overall impact of nicotine addiction and the potential for its use among children and youth, some e-cigarettes emit a nicotine-containing aerosol that contaminates the air, and it is deposited where those particles are set, and that can persist for a long period of time. Although we may lack the specific quantification of the typical levels of nicotine, we know for certain already that there are many harmful products that are contained in a lot of these e-cigarettes. This council has received several materials that I would like to address. One of these is a study by Igor Bersting, which concludes that there is no evidence that the use of e-cigarettes warrants any health concerns. This finding, ladies and gentlemen, is based on a comparison to threshold limit values. That is developed for workers in occupational settings, not in public health, and it is intended to characterize the maximum acceptable exposure for a healthy worker that does not include children, adolescents, pregnant women, or anyone which is of the general public. In addition, you have received correspondence related and reinterpreting some of the wording in Dr. David Abrams, who is a respectable scientist with the Schroder Institute. I would like to address Dr. Abrams' article where he presents both the promise and the perils of e-cigarettes. And he concludes himself that e-cigarettes and some non-combustible nicotine-delivering products can be used as a part of harm reduction strategy to relapse and/or to prevent relapse from smoking. But I am quoting Dr. Abrams himself. Although the science is insufficient to reach firm conclusions, we do know that e-cigarettes with a prudent tobacco control regulation will have the potential to make combustible tobacco possibly a thing of the past. But it requires careful thought. Different perspectives were also presented on the Journal of the American Medical Association, which were not brought to your attention and that you must also look at. And finally, I would like to say that, as Kendall Stack from the Chicago Department of Public Health has stated, there are no restrictions on ingredients or chemicals that are contained in e-cigarettes. And even in the best promise of harm reduction for smokers, e-cigarettes should be taken outside until we have complete scientific evidence that assures us that they will do no public harm. The council has also received correspondence from Richard Carmona. Dr. Carmona is the 17th Surgeon General of the United States. My boss, Dr. John Sammet, worked with Dr. Carmona in both the 2004 and the 2006 Surgeon General Report and has been the scientific editor for the Surgeon General's Reports since 1984. And I would like to quote Dr. Sammet. While I respect Dr. Carmona's viewpoints, note that the Surgeon General's Reports are based on a comprehensive review of all the evidence available, and scientific conclusions are reached in these reports only when there is sufficient scientific evidence to meet the highest threshold of certainty. Therefore, in the case of Dr. Carmona, he can only offer opinions, but not scientific evidence-based conclusions on their role in harm reduction or their potential for public health. The council today is facing a critical decision for public health in Los Angeles. While the scientific evidence increases, the council decision is particular to consider the impact this will have, not just on young people, but also on workers, many of them over 21 years of age in Los Angeles. Given the present state of the sciences and in conclusions, the aerosol from these cigarettes is not the same as the aerosol from your tea kettle. And does not, we have to consider, does a promise for harm reduction of a few that may actually be able to quit smoking outweigh the potential harms of the many and of the entire public? E-cigarettes, ladies and gentlemen, need to be taken outside. That is the opinion of Dr. Jonathan Sammet and of the Department of Preventive Medicine at the Kek School of Medicine, University of Southern California. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Fielding, do you want to say something?
I just want to make, I just want to make one point. I just want to make one point. You mentioned the opinion of Dr. Carmona, a surgeon, former surgeon general. And I would just point out that he also joined the board of one of the e-cigarette companies. So I think you have to understand that when you interpret what he's saying.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, doctors. Mr. Chair, in the interest of fairness, I understand that we have someone from the opposition, Dr. Jeff Steyer, or Steer, my apologies.
I see him. Doctor, please come forward from my right. Have a seat at the center table.
To give an opposing view. Thank you, Doctor.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. I'm Jeff Steyer. I'm a Senior Fellow at the National Center for Public Policy Research, and to some degree, I don't think it's an opposing view. I share Dr. Fielding's point of view that the precautionary principle should prevail, especially in a progressive city, in a progressive city council, where we understand the importance of technology to protect public health. The precautionary principle, however, applies to regulations as well. Regulations should be narrowly tailored to achieve a public health goal, and they shouldn't do more harm than good. Now, the science on e-cigarettes is still developing, but actually, a lot more is known than has been suggested. But the science is very well-developed on the dangers of smoking. And as you consider regulations here today about e-cigarettes, keep in mind that the Food and Drug Administration has, for over a year, been analyzing e-cigarettes. And there's a reason that the Food and Drug Administration has not yet issued their regulations, and that is because the FDA understands that while regulations of e-cigarettes are good, and I support regulations, those regulations should be narrowly tailored and should be aware of the, should keep into account the unintended consequences of regulation. Let me tell you one very serious unintended consequence of a regulation like this without having an exemption, for instance, for bars. This is a place where only adults go in. What happens now is cigarette smokers go into a bar and they have to go outside. People who have quit smoking, and by the way, we hear how popular e-cigarettes are, they're popular vastly among cigarette smokers. The data does not show that nonsmokers are using these in any significant way. So you've got a smoker who's quit smoking. They're at a bar, they want to use their vapor product, and that is good news for public health. Without an amendment that would exempt bars, this law would require former smokers, which to me are champions, to go outside with the smokers? That's nonsense. They're, they have a drink, they're a former smoker, you're going to put them outside with smokers, they're going to go back to smoking. And if you don't give at least an exemption to bars, you're going to be, you know, we talk about the precautionary principle. Let's be careful. The reason the FDA is moving slowly here is because they're aware of these unintended consequences. If you force former smokers to go outside and have their e-cigarette, with all due respect, you will be held accountable for them going back to smoking. So from a public health perspective, please be careful. Please apply that precautionary principle. I'd be happy to take questions about some of the scientific issues that have come up, especially with regard to issues like normalization. E-cigarettes do not renormalize smoking. They normalize not smoking. I'd be happy to take some questions.
Okay, we have no questions this time. Thank you for your comments. We're going to open it up to the public, who can make their comment at this time. We're going to go 50 and 50. Thank you very much. Those who are opposed, it'll be one-minute comment. Donna Perman, you're starting off. Donna, you're opposed to anything? Is that correct?
Okay, sure. Okay, I can speak now? Okay, okay, while I'm not totally against it, I do see some regulations in, we should have some regulations that they don't smoke indoors because it does look like they're smoking, and it might encourage people to smoke. But basically, there should be no regulations whatsoever on outside. There are some on smoking cigarettes outside. So we can't have this outside because basically what you're doing is you're encouraging people who are going to electronic cigarettes that don't cause, really don't really cause, secondhand smoke, the little teeny bit of vapor. So you're encouraging them to go back in using regular cigarettes and using widespread, so don't do that.
Ruben Rodriguez.
Good morning, and thank you, council members, for allowing me a moment or two to speak on the issue. I'm just here, my name is Ruben Rodriguez, and I'm Executive Director of Pueblo Salud. It translates into Community and Health. It's an organization dedicated to the prevention of alcohol, tobacco, and drug abuse, out in the North San Fernando Valley and in Palmdale. I'm only here to address two things on the issue. We're asking you to please ban tobacco use or the e-cigarette use in all public places where you have jurisdiction. We have to address two issues, the deception and the intent. This product, this product is not safe. All the young people are smoking it. It's an electronic gadget that appeals to them, and they're using it because it's a novelty. Their real intent is to addict them to nicotine. Don't forget, we call it mainlining in heroin. Nicotine is addicting.
Thank you. Ruben Gonzalez. And Madam Clerk, the only cards I have for against a general comment on this are these three. Anyone out in the public wants to speak against this issue, please, as a sergeant, fill out a card. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Ruben Gonzalez. I'm here on behalf of the L.A. Area Chamber of Commerce. Individual freedom and individual choice is also an ideal in a progressive city. And what we have to see here is when you use the inspiring power of government to regulate, you should only do it when there is a necessary public need, a public benefit, a public health concern, that should overcome the individual's right to choose. In this case, unlike tobacco, where years ago, we found that there was that evidence, conclusive evidence, that there was a necessary public benefit to regulate individual action, that is not yet the case here. When we heard the testimony earlier, we heard there's a lot of may's, there's a lot of might-be's, there's a lot of, well, we don't have all the evidence yet. And given that, we really should not be putting significant regulations on an adult product used by adults in adult locations, adult establishments, adult businesses. So please, at a minimum, support an exemption for bars. Allow adults and allow business owners to make those choices. Thank you.
Okay, we got that message from you. Thank you, Ruben. Now, people, favor of it, Marlene Gomez, followed by Charles Smith, followed by Cynthia Hollitt.
Good morning. My name is Marlene Gomez, and I'm the Advocacy Manager for the American Lung Association. We are very concerned that very little is known about the health effects of electronic cigarettes and of the emissions that they release. Initial studies have found formaldehyde, benzene, and tobacco-specific nitrosemes, which are cancer-causing chemicals coming from the second-hand emissions. It is clear that there is much to be learned about these products, but it is also clear there is much more than just water vapor coming from the second-hand emissions of e-cigarettes. In California, 44 jurisdictions have already included e-cigarette in their smoke-free air laws, of which 11 are here in L.A. County. In addition, we are very concerned that these products are starting kids on a lifetime path of addiction. There are over 250 brands of e-cigarettes, including flavors such as Captain Crunch and Fruit Loops. At this time, I would like to ask everyone here in support of your efforts to please We urge you to please vote yes on the current ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Smith, followed by Cynthia Hallett.
Good morning. My name is Charles Smith, Charlie Smith. I am a volunteer with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I'm the former Chair of the Board of the American Cancer Society, California Division, and I'm a resident of Council 12, Council District 12. The American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network supports the amendments to the Los Angeles Municipal Code to revise the definition of smoking to include e-cigarettes and other electronic smoking devices. The health effects of e-cigarettes, especially the long-term effects, are scientifically unknown, as Dr. Fielding has mentioned, but we do know that there have been a number of studies that have shown the dangers of e-cigarettes. A 2009 study by the FDA, for example, showed that there were cancer-causing substances in several of the e-cigarette samples. As a parent of a child who grew up in a city where smoking indoors was prohibited, allowing the use of e-cigarettes violates, and is a step backward. Thank you. I urge the Council to approve these measures.
Michael Ong, followed by Paul Hershott. State your name for the record.
You bet. Good morning. My name is Cynthia Hallett. I am the Executive Director of Americans for Nonsmokers' Rights. We are a national, member-based advocacy organization, working to clear the air of second-hand smoke, and now second-hand aerosol, and working to prevent another generation addicted to nicotine. We're here in support of the proposal to include electronic cigarettes as items prohibited from use in smoke-free environments. Los Angeles stands to join over 100 cities across the U.S. and three states. You've heard about New York City and Chicago. Boston has had a similar law in place for the past three years, covering all workplaces at all times, including bars and over 21 establishments. That is because this is a worker health and safety issue. While we may not have as much research on what is in the second-hand aerosol, there is enough to cause concern. This law should be about protecting public health, taking that precautionary approach instead of the, well, let's wait and see philosophy, which would mean having L.A. residents be guinea pigs. FDA will not regulate where you can use. We support the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Ong.
Hi, my name is Michael Ong, and I'm the Chair of the State of California Tobacco Education Research Oversight Committee, and we've submitted a letter to the Council that states our support for the proposed ordinance because T-Rock opposes the use of electronic cigarettes in all areas where other tobacco products are banned. I would also mention that I'm a practicing physician at UCLA, and I would remind the Council that UCLA, as well as all the other University of California campuses, treats electronic cigarettes the same way as all tobacco products, and they are not allowed on use on campus. The final thing I would say, as a practicing physician, I treat people who suffer from tobacco-related diseases, as well as from second-hand smoke-related diseases, and when city councils previously did not act swiftly to work on public health issues, we basically force people to suffer from these diseases. And I think that it would be important, under the precautionary principle, to make sure that we regulate until we know for sure that these products are safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paul Hershott, is that correct, Paul?
Paul Hersh.
Thank you. I apologize, I should get my glasses.
No problem. Good afternoon. My name is Paul Hersh. I am a high school principal here in the Los Angeles Unified School District. I come before the Council to urge you to pass this measure and to help keep e-cigarettes out of schools because they are showing up in our classrooms. Vape shops are opening up around our campuses, and it's hard for me to believe that we're even having a debate about nicotine. It is a dangerously addictive substance. As it stands, there are not enough regulations to keep these things out of our schools. You're putting educators in a very vulnerable place. And again, I would simply urge you to pass this ordinance and put the same regulations on e-cigarettes that have helped keep tobacco cigarettes out of our schools. Thank you.
Principal Hersh, thank you very much, and good work at Bernstein High School. Very good. Helen Bernstein was a great woman. Okay, thank you. Stephanie Mullen, followed by Dr. Kimberly Ukida.
Thank you, City Council. My name is Stephanie Mullen. I'm here today on behalf of Breathe California of Los Angeles County. We focus on air quality and lung health, and the populations that we support are, you know, are elderly who are fighting with chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, women like Anna Young, 32, waiting for a double-lung transplant, can only smoke, can only breathe through, like breathing through a straw, and our children with asthma. These are the populations that we need to protect. This is your job today in City Council, to protect the constituents of L.A. City, and the nation is looking to you. We support this ordinance. We find that it's going to take a lot of courage. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Dr. Kimberly Ukida, forgive me, doctor, if I mispronounced your last name.
Good morning, Mr. President, and distinguished members of the L.A. City Council. On behalf of the Los Angeles Unified School District Superintendent Dr. John Daisy, I am Dr. Kimberly Uweda. I'm the Director of Student Medical Services in Los Angeles Unified School District that educates close to a million students, both early education through adult education daily. I'm here to submit on for record that the L.A. USD supports the proposed ordinance that's before you today. The 2009 Tobacco Control Act has made significant headway to curbing marketing and sales of tobacco products to children. We are very concerned about a 2012 study by the Center for Disease Control that shows that e-cigarette use among sixth to 12th graders has doubled over, between 2011 and 12. And for that reason, we would firmly support the proposed ordinance that proposes a greater regulation of e-cigarettes in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you for your consideration of this important matter, and I truly support the Bernstein principle as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and say hello to Superintendent Deasy for us. Thank you, Dr. Michael. Mitchell, excuse me. Mitchell, I want to say it correctly, Mitchell, as you come up here with the V-I-E-Y-R-A.
Vieira.
Vieira, thank you, Mitchell.
Good morning, distinguished members of the City Council, Council President. I'm here on behalf of the Building Owners and Managers Association of Greater Los Angeles. Thank you. We represent over 300 Class A high-rise office buildings within the county, over half of which are in the city of L.A. Large numbers of tenants have come to our management companies and are concerned about e-cigarettes in the workplace. We strongly support the ban on electronic cigarettes in the workplace until the Food and Drug Administration approves them as a cessation device and regulates their production. We will hope to continue to work with the City Council, and I'm building a healthier L.A. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Tiffany Peterson.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Peterson. I'm a resident and voter in District 11. Mr. Bonin, that's you. I am here actually as a former smoker. I smoked for five and a half years, and I quit eight years ago. And I strongly, strongly, strongly encourage that we pass this bill with absolutely no exceptions. I'm also a stand-up comic, so I'm in bars a lot, and as a non-smoker, I don't want to be smoking these e-cigarette vapors, the pockets of air and smoke that are already being, they're already smoking inside. I don't want to be smoking them. As a non-smoker, I don't want to be, I don't want to be around it. So, Mr. Bonin, I want your vote. Thank you.
Edith Schiller. Thank you, Edith.
Good morning. My name is Esther Schiller.
I've got to get my glasses on, I'm sorry.
I'm a retired teacher, and I'm here today to urge you to regulate electronic cigarettes. Do we really want to encounter them on elevators? Do we really want to encounter them in movie theaters, in supermarkets? I remember when smoking was allowed in supermarkets. In the park, where kids are playing soccer? At the beach playground, where the parents are pushing their kids on the swings? The most terrible part of all of this is it's being marketed to kids, deliberately marketed to kids, in the same creative ways that they were marketed in the 40s and 50s. Does anybody remember that? Scientists have learned that the brains of teens are not fully mature in the section of the brain responsible for making decisions. It's no surprise that the use of e-cigarettes by teens has doubled from 211 to 212. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Cowan. Yeah, almost. Followed by Daniel Soto.
Good morning. My name is Wendy Cowan, and I'm a homeowner and resident in District 11, Mr. Bonin. And I strongly support the ban on e-cigarettes inside all public places. If you are a non-smoker, there is no need for you to go outside with smokers, therefore alleviating this problem. One person's choice to smoke anything does not trump my right to clean air. I urge you to vote for the ban and to protect the people you are elected to serve. Thank you.
Daniel Soto.
Good morning, council members. I encourage you to support the proposed measure that's in front of you today, and encourage you all to vote yes. I just want to share a personal story, and that is that my father recently passed of esophageal cancer, which was tobacco-related. During his fight with cancer, it was very troublesome to see my daughter playing at the playground and asking us why a mother was smoking in front of her child. And in reality, it was an e-cigarette. But what bothered me the most was the smell of the vapor that was coming off the e-cigarette smelled appealing to my nine-year-old daughter at a time when my father was ill with esophageal cancer. This troubled me very much, and it bothers me to know that there were no regulations to control the use of e-cigarettes in public places, and I'm very happy to know that this is something that's been proposed, and I encourage you all to vote in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Walsh, followed by Yaneth Rodriguez.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, retired teacher, L.A. USD, 25 years. E-cigarettes are no effin' good. I have one here in my hand. I'm telling you right now, I deeply resent, as a Jew, allowing someone pro-e-cigarettes to get up here and speak as long as he want, wearing a yarmulke. As a Jew, I want everybody in the world to know that pro-e-cigarettes is not a Jewish position. Vaping, being a victim of vaping is like being a victim of raping. We don't want e-cigarettes. Fold them up, and you know where to put them. There isn't a person in this city not being paid off by the vaping lobby who is in favor of these cigarettes. Gummy bears flavored cigarettes? That's disgusting. HollywoodHighlands.org.
This is public comment, and this is Ms. Rodriguez for the final card. We welcome all people here to make their comment. Thank you.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Yaneth Rodriguez, and I'm a concerned resident that lives in Echo Park, District 13. Being young and living in a hip town allows me the opportunity to walk to restaurants and support bars and have a great time. However, recently, I've actually seen e-cigarettes in these establishments, and I've actually had to walk out because I do not want to be exposed to these toxic emissions. I feel I have the right, as a non-smoker, to breathe clean air, and so I urge the City Council to not include any exemptions or any amendments, and please, pass this ordinance. And not only is this going to protect the workers, as well as, you know, people that are over 21 and young people as myself, it also mimics and looks like cigarettes. And I don't want our children to see this and have this be a modeling behavior for them. So please, I urge you to pass this ordinance with no exemptions. Thank you.
Mitch, just remarked that we have a bunch of people on the queue.
Having, knowing that, Mr. Chair, I would like to invite some folks up to answer questions that my colleagues may have, starting with Dr. Lourdes Viscondi Garbanati, and Cynthia Hallett, and Dr. Michael Ong. Dr. Viscondi Garbanati, Associate Professor in Preventive Medicine and Sociology Institute for Health Promotion and Disease Prevention Research, Kex School of Medicine, University of Southern California, and the Chairperson of Tobacco Education and Research Oversight Committee. Cynthia Hallett, MPH, a Master of Public Health, Executive Director of Americans for Nonsmokers' Rights. Dr. Michael Ong, PhD and medical doctor, Assistant Professor and Residence, Division of General Internal Medicine and Health Services, Research Department of Medicine, University of California, Los Angeles. Colleagues, do we have any questions for these folks?
Just a question, yeah, just here with the city attorney. Hold on just a second, please.
And, Mr. Chair, we're also advised by the Council President to invite back up Dr. Jeff Steer.
Very good. All right, Mr. Buscagino is on the queue. Are we okay, Mr. O'Farrell? Mr. Buscagino from the 15th District.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for championing this effort here, and I agree with you almost 100% on what you're trying to accomplish here. And as I stated in committee, I personally am not a fan of smoking. I don't like seeing it, I hate it, I don't like smelling it, and I don't like being around it. I've spoken to my kids about it and have educated them about the dangers of smoking. Tobacco use remains the leading preventive cause of death in the United States. And I agree that we need to protect our children from the dangers of smoking, and that's why I voted to support the prohibition of selling e-cigarettes to minors. However, although e-cigarettes look like cigarettes, they are not tobacco, and I don't think they should be regulated exactly the same way. And I've heard from so many people, including my cousin Anthony, that they've stopped smoking from the help of e-cigarettes. And I heard a startling statistic, nearly 70% of smokers want to quit, but only 6% are successful. And now, it's one thing to identify harmful effects, but another to seek moral conformity. And Dr. Steyer, who is here, and you heard from him, I have a question for you, sir. How have, have any studies, have there been any studies that have been conducted that monitor workplace exposure to second-hand vapor? And if so, what do those studies show?
Thank you. Well, in fact, there have been studies, and the people in favor of a ban have actually said, this study isn't good, the one by Dr. Igor Berstein at Drexel, it was a published study. This is no good because it was only about workplace exposures. Well, if you're interested in exempting bars, then the study by Igor Berstein, which said that people who are exposed to second-hand vapor, and I'm going to correct the record because a number of people in favor of these bans keep saying, smoke, there's no smoke. You know why there's no smoke? There's no second-hand smoke, there's no firsthand smoke, there's no combustion, there's no combustion, there's no tobacco. So I'm not saying, oh, it's just water vapor from a tea kettle. That's not correct. But the studies on workplace exposure say that the vapor from e-cigarettes falls within workplace limits, and that study after study are showing that, and it makes sense because there's no smoke, because there's no tobacco that's burning.
So, colleagues, without conclusive evidence that second-hand vapor from e-cigarettes is harmful, I don't believe we should be in a hurry to put so many restrictions on where and how adults, again, adults can use a legal product. And I believe this ordinance, in its current form, goes too far in the direction of restricting individual liberty. And I'd like to propose an amendment circling before you that would exempt bars from this ban and allow the owners of these individual establishments... and allow the owners of these individual establishments to make their own decisions on whether or not to allow e-cigarettes in their establishments. Thank you.
Okay, you need a second on that. All right, there's a second for Mr. Price. Mr. Corretts for the 5th District, a champion of many things.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this is one of them. As many of you know, I've been involved with cigarette smoking issues for about 35 years. And I actually contacted my former boss, Marvin Browdy, and said, "Will you join me when I pass a ban on smoking in West Hollywood restaurants and help me get other cities on board?" And we did that as a regional effort. And ultimately, that has gradually led to a lot of the smoking regulations that we have today. I'm most concerned about kids. I think we all are. And I think, I probably don't even need to discuss that because we all know this is marketed to kids. This is getting some kids that don't smoke tobacco to start. And I think there seems to be general agreement among the council. But as we looked at this issue with tobacco 25 years ago, there is a huge impact in terms of secondhand smoke, secondhand vapor now. But secondhand smoke back then, it's a question of, should customers be exposed to it? Well, no. But the dramatic difference was employees in restaurants and especially employees in bars where there was the greatest exposure. I spoke to, I don't know how many people who, after this was passed, said, "I can feel the difference in my lungs." And the big surprise to me was it was actually smokers that worked in bars that were saying, "I feel the difference. I can feel a dramatic difference in my lungs even though I'm a smoker." So I believe the impact especially will be on employees that have a frequent exposure. Now, do we know how dangerous these are yet? No, and obviously the advocates for e-cigarettes will tell you they're just fine. Just as tobacco companies, even when we were passing our ban on restaurants, were saying, "Unwarranted." We haven't proven that cigarettes are that unsafe. I believe in a certain number of years, when the FDA does regulate this, they will identify the dozens and dozens of different harmful chemicals that are in e-cigarettes and they will regulate them greatly. I think we're in the same position as we were as a society a few decades ago when we were beginning to regulate tobacco cigarettes. I think it's only a matter of time. The question is, what is the danger? On one side, you have a danger of exposing thousands and thousands of people to something that is very likely to be harmful to them. On the other hand, the danger is, you didn't let them smoke e-cigarettes in some bars. The question is, what do you think the greater risk is? Where do you want to take that chance? Do you take it on behalf of the health of the people of Los Angeles? Or do you take it on behalf of people that want to smoke in bars? Now, we've even allowed people to smoke in vaporing lounges. So if you want to go somewhere to smoke, you do have an opportunity. We actually have amended that into some of our regulations. So this is just a question of, if you're a bar patron, do you have to put up with this exposure? If you're a restaurant patron where it's 21 years and older, do you have to put up with this exposure? And if you're an employee, do you have to be exposed to this? I think we should err on behalf of the health of the people of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin is next. Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mitch, thank you for bringing that. Mr. Ofero, thank you for bringing this item forward. I used to be a two-pack-a-day smoker, quit 18 years ago. So technology has changed since I quit. Apparently, I'm also one of the swing votes on Mr. Buscagino's motion, so I have a lot of questions, so please answer briefly and succinctly so I can ask them all. Why, entry question, why do we treat e-cigarettes? Why should we treat them as like cigarettes and not like nicotine gum or nicotine patches? And that's for the advocates of the proposal.
So nicotine replacement therapy products, such as the patch and the gum and other types of nicotine replacement therapy have been subjected to randomized control trials and actually have gone through the drug approval process through the Food and Drug Administration. At this point, electronic cigarettes have not entered that. And I think that there was some initial discussion on how electronic cigarettes may be potentially considered a drug delivery device if they make those type of claims. So they have backed off from doing that at this point. But there are certainly many therapies that work in terms of helping smokers quit. And it is true, as Mr. Buscagino mentioned, 70% of smokers do want to quit. I would say that there are failures on our health insurance system in terms of paying for these therapies that work as well as on healthcare providers because only 50% of those people who want to quit actually get any type of treatment from the healthcare system.
On a continuum of harm that includes marijuana, alcohol, regular cigarettes and e-cigarettes, where does e-cigarettes fall?
E-cigarettes are certainly a gateway into all of the above.
Yeah, but that's not my question. Where, is marijuana more harmful than e-cigarettes?
Nicotine can be as addictive as heroin. And many of these e-cigarettes do contain some level of nicotine. It varies, but they do contain nicotine.
Is that more or less harmful than marijuana? I like to legalize marijuana, so I'm trying to figure out where this fits in my thinking.
Well, if nicotine is as harmful as heroin, I do not want to praise an opinion on marijuana myself, but I believe heroin is highly addictive and I would rate nicotine as highly addictive as heroin.
It was a lot harder to quit than almost everything else I quit and there's a lot of stuff I had to quit. For me, the question of Mr. Buscagino's amendment comes down to the secondhand impacts. I've heard you explain what they're not. I'd really like to know what they are according to the advocates.
Well...
If Mr. Buscagino is vaping and we're driving in a car together, how does it impact me?
Well, I think that's a good question. We have some preliminary information and we have put together a fact sheet from Americans for Nonsmokers' Rights from all of the peer-reviewed journal articles, not reports like the Igor Berstein, which is just a report that was put together. I don't know that it's been published in a peer-reviewed journal. But we know that there are ultrafine particles, which are very, very small, easy to inhale. The propylene glycol is a lung irritant. There are eye irritants. There are volatile organic compounds, lead, chromium, et cetera. The e-cigarettes are still relatively new, so there isn't as much research as we have on the health effects of secondhand smoke. But we do know that there are pollutants, toxicants, and carcinogens. And the question is, why not take the precautionary approach to protect public health based on what we do know now rather than saying the opposite, which is, "Let's let Los Angeles residents be guinea pigs and we'll see what happens and who gets sick."
I get that. And I think the counterargument to that would be that the folks who advocate or manufacture e-cigarettes would have to prove a negative. It's harder to prove something is safe. However, last week, Mr. Corretts and I got this council to approve drafting an ordinance that is a moratorium on fracking, which basically said, "You can't frac until you can prove it's safe." So I want to be consistent in my thinking. There is, with fracking, plenty of evidence of swarms of earthquakes popping up places where they have done fracking. So I don't need the FAA to meet my standard of evidence. I don't need it to be that conclusive. I need to know that there's a sufficient body of evidence to raise concern, to do something until then. So I'd like, if you could talk a little bit more about that, what different studies there have been, who thereby? And here's my sort of frame on it. How do, how does that preponderance of, how does that evidence match up against the evidence that shows that there are potentially harmful effects from cell phones? Because we're not outlawing cell phones. So I want to look at it through that prism.
So going back to your original question that you asked earlier, which is, you know, where do cigarettes, where do electronic cigarettes, where do they lie on that spectrum of harm? I think that the evidence is pretty clear that cigarettes are the leading preventable cause of death and by far outweigh anything like alcohol. Since marijuana hasn't been well-studied, it's hard to really say where marijuana, or for that matter, electronic cigarettes really fall. So I think that, at this point, it really comes down to, how do we think electronic cigarettes will impact the use of cigarettes? As well as what are in the products themselves?
I understand that you want to answer that question. That's not going to impact my thinking?
No, I understand that.
What will impact my thinking is, how many studies have there been and what do they show about what the secondhand impacts will be on me if Joe is vaping?
So I think that the problem with the impact of secondhand smoke really comes down to, these are not products that are, for example, like cigarettes, where it's pretty clear what comes out of them. So in terms of the product testing that actually has happened, there are many different manufacturers and some of the early studies showed these products didn't even have any nicotine. Some of them actually had carcinogens. So there's a wide range of things that are out there right now. So it's really difficult to say what actually is going to be in these electronic cigarettes to affect your health.
And I left my paperwork back in the aisle. We do have, again, our fact sheet, which is, it's cited, which all the studies came from. And then there was recently a report prepared by three researchers at the University of California, San Francisco, that I believe you may have received a copy of. It's a background report for the World Health Organization. And many countries globally are also adopting similar rules with respect to prohibiting e-cigarette use in smoke-free environments for the same reasons that there is plenty of evidence currently on looking at what's in the secondhand aerosol, that it does have toxicants and it's irritant to, you know, non-smokers. These products are still early. We don't have that same base of science. And given that they're owned by tobacco companies who are convicted racketeers, tobacco companies suppressed research before, that they knew that tobacco was addictive and that secondhand smoke was harmful. We're seeing a similar pattern here.
I'm way over my time, so I got to sit down. If you could have someone get that fact sheet to one of the Sergeant-at-Arms, like, immediately?
Mr. Fuipe Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was hoping that I could ask a question of Dr. Fielding. Is he still available?
He's back at the county doing work for the county.
So Dr. Fielding from the county isn't here. So my question, unfortunately, maybe our City Attorney can help me understand this. So the question is, if the county is the lead on health issues, what prevents the County of Los Angeles from actually banning or regulating the use of e-cigarettes or anything else? My question for the county is, why employ an 88-city sort of strategy if we're going to try to be uniformity? I think, to me, that would be really important to know. And maybe there's a legal opinion or legal reasons that we can't, that we have to do it city by city. But I'd love to know why it is that the county hasn't taken any measures, or have they? Where are we in terms of their wanting to actually regulate?
I don't know if the City Attorney could answer that, but we contract with the county and there's only, I think, three or four, Long Beach, Pasadena, and one other city may have their independent health departments. That's why.
But their charge is the health regulation of the County of Los Angeles and we're one of 88 cities. So there has to be a legal rationale why we would be having to take an action as a city as opposed to the county taking an action on the issue. If you could come up to the mic, Mr. City Attorney, so we could all benefit from your opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. I'll be actually testifying on this issue when the expert panel has concluded answering questions. But as to yours, it's really, I think your question is a political question as much as it is a legal question, which I think the implicationary question is, why hasn't the county acted? And that's up to the Board of Supervisors to decide. As Mr. Labange indicated, our public health expert pursuant to contract with the county, as this body is aware, has testified, and that's the County Public Health Department, through Mr. Fielding.
And I appreciate the political filter on it. My question is a process one. Do they not occupy the space to regulate the use of cigarettes, e-cigarettes, that sort of thing? I mean, it seems to me that we're stepping in their shoes.
No. No, the city is free, as a matter of law, to adopt these regulations independent of whatever the county decides or decides not to do.
But the county, they act as a threshold potentially. I mean, if they were to say, if the supervisors, the county, were to take an action saying that they prohibit, similar to this ban, we couldn't regulate above that ban?
No, the county does not have preemptive authority in this area, if that's your question.
Okay.
Pardon me, I formerly, back in 1993, I worked at the Los Angeles County Department of Health Services. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that a county rule would only cover unincorporated areas of LA County. No? Okay.
Very good. Now, thank you very much, Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Bloomfield, we're going to hold that. Did you get your answer okay?
Okay.
Hold on, Bob. Hold on, Robert, just a second. At the center desk, did you complete your comment? Yes, Mr. Bloomfield.
Thank you. I want to sort of continue along the comments of my colleague to the left and I also want to praise Mr. Ofero for bringing this forward. You know, our public health is extremely important. I have trouble with the idea of us regulating social behavior, except when it directly impacts someone else. And so that's why the smoking bans, I'm all for those. And the arguments about, some of the other arguments don't appeal to me as much, but the secondhand issue is the one that I'm really focused on, that's sort of the turning point for me. And I don't, I don't understand it in terms of, and I have, I've been spending a lot of time, I have two large piles of studies and looking at the scientific studies on one side and on the other side. Some of them, both appear to be from reputable things. There are ones that you can discount, but I do see evidence on both sides. When it comes to, and I'm trying to understand the continuum of where does vapor fall in that continuum? And I know it's different than cigarettes. One of the things, it appears that most of the secondhand smoke from a cigarette is not actually when you exhale. Two-thirds or more of it is just the cigarette burning. And in fact, you know, the demonstration about can you tell the difference between the cigarettes? I didn't find that too appealing either because you can tell the difference between a lit cigarette and a vapor cigarette. Because a lit cigarette has smoke all around it and has a red appeal to it, you know, a red light. So on the ultrafine particle issue, how, I want to know, how is it different than, let's say, some of the other things that we know emit ultrafine particles? For example, I'm told that, you know, some of the studies I read say that if you're next to a laser printer, you get ultrafine particles. Do you get more or less than, from a vapor? Frying bacon, you know, a fireplace, we know that gives off a number of ultrafine particles that are, we're talking about banning campfires in different areas for that reason. A candlelit dinner. I don't know how it all falls together. I want to understand that. And then the carcinogen aspect too. Where that continuum falls in place? I mean, coffee is technically a carcinogen, just as nicotine is. Nicotine is addictive and that's a big problem, but that's not related to the secondhand smoke issue. So I do want to understand where these things fall in the continuum, both in terms of the ultrafine particles and in terms of the carcinogenic value. And specifically on the secondhand side of it, not on the individual who's inhaling it.
If I could address that, I'm going to address something from the African-American Tobacco Control Leadership Council, who actually conducted a series of lit reviews. And I have information on about seven or eight articles, which actually, in addition to the nicotine, the e-liquid itself contains propylene glycol, glycerine metals, flavorants. And in addition, it has volatile organic compounds, which are in the aerosol when the e-cigarette is vaped.
But it's all about the comparison. What I want to know is, how is what is exhaled? Not what's in the liquid.
Yeah, what's in the e-vapor in particular?
What is exhaled? How that compares to other pollutants that are out there from common, everyday activities? Even cleaning detergent, perfume. All of these things create, hairspray, they do create other ultrafine particles and carcinogens. And I want to understand where it falls in the realm of things.
Where it falls in the realm of things is if you look at the contents of metals, carbonil compounds, volatile organic compounds, it's the combination of these compounds and the fact that there are multiple of these compounds in one product that is currently not regulated in terms of what they contain. So the e-cigarettes could vary widely from having very little and being very low in the spectrum of this kind of exposure to much higher levels. And therefore, it's an issue, are we going to regulate each cigarette company and the type of e-cigarette in particular? That's too difficult to do. And therefore, there's a variety of e-cigarettes which vary very widely in terms of they may, where they may fall in each one of those exposures.
Why is that too difficult to do? Isn't that what we expect our FDA to do?
It is, but it's that what the FDA is going to take years to do. And therefore, being able to regulate early on on something that we know there are some of those cigarettes which do contain all of these particles, contain accumulation of those particles, and also contain nicotine, what we need to look at today, based on where the science is today.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomfield. We have now Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I've kind of looked at this over the years and I think the, when we get into these discussions, sometime it gets a little too... sometime it gets a little too technical. Would I come down on the side of, had the tobacco industry not lied for 50 years, how many people would have still be alive? And should we wait for e-cigarettes to come to a conclusion 20 years from now and say, how many people should be alive? The second issue is that it's very voluntary to participate in smoking or e-cigarettes, and this is one that we should take away from our, teaching our kids to share, this is not a shared activity. If you have an interest in e-cigarettes and smoking, you should be home, in your car, someplace private, and not subject other people to your particular need to have nicotine. And although we talk about nicotine cavalierly, and say it's not part of the smoking issue, it is addictive and it's not, in general, viewed as healthy heart management. So we have a situation in which we're dealing with that nicotine is harmful in other ways, and it is addictive, but I just think that we should let people smoke and e-cigarette as much as they want, as long as they're in the privacy of their home and their car, but to subject it to other people when they don't want to be subjected. And why should I, as a resident of the city, be a scientist and walk through public places and wonder what that person is smoking and know what the content is? Why don't we just say to people, take your habits to your personal need? And we should not be subjecting other people. That's where it comes down to, you have every right, constitutional right, to smoke and to have e-cigarettes, but I also have a constitutional right to have as much clean air as possible. And you should not impose upon me your habits. And so I think it comes down easier, I think it gets too complicated when you start talking about all the terms with 15 letters in it, and how much is this, and carcinogenic, and all that other. The issue is, is that it's a private matter that you should do in private, if that's what you want to do. You should not be subjecting anyone else to your private issues. And I think it comes down, makes it a little bit simpler, and it's a matter of common sense of who we subject things to, and the sense of what people should be subjected to if they don't want to be subjected to it. And as we said in many other issues in public, you have a right to go into a place and buy a sandwich, but that right shouldn't be impaired by someone else over in the corner deciding to do something. It's not necessarily offensive in the sense of pornography or something like that, but it certainly, if it begins to harm my health, I have a right to stand up, put my hand up, and say, don't do that. And I think that's the issue that we should be confronted with, but I would not trust the tobacco industry, after their long history, of being the ones that own e-cigarette companies and now telling you, this is not harmful. I just think you should take that harm to your private residence or your private vehicle.
If you're asking about e-cigarette companies, if you're asking about e-cigarette companies, one of the leading brands has made it its mission to put cigarette companies out of business, and I think they're right, and I'm with them on that. So e-cigarettes have a potential to help people quit smoking. Financial analysts have made the point that within a decade, e-cigarette sales will outpace cigarette sales. I think that's a victory for public health that we should not get in the way of. That's a victory.
Mr. Parks?
If one company made that claim, that's great, but also, we, as everyone has said, you don't have the evidence that if you outsell cigarettes over the next several decades, what is the unintended consequences and what is the harm you created that's new, different, and now they're just dying of something else with 15 letters in it?
I certainly hope you're not suggesting that the dangers of e-cigarettes come anywhere close to cigarette smokers, because they don't.
Okay, now we're gonna call on Ms. Martinez, Councilwoman Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I grew up living with a smoker. My mother smoked for 45 years, and it was probably the most hardest thing I've ever seen her do to quit. I mean, it was very, very challenging. I live with a smoker. I'm married to a man who has tried to quit smoking for the past 10 years, and it's very, very difficult. He stopped smoking about five years ago, and he began smoking last year. So I can tell you firsthand that it's incredibly difficult to see someone go through that kind of struggle to stop smoking, but I think smoking is a personal choice. I think someone who chooses to smoke has a right to do so, and it's, they have a choice to smoke, they also have a choice to quit. Unfortunately, smart children don't have a choice in the matter. And a person like myself, I absolutely prohibit smoking inside my house or anywhere near my five-year-old daughter. We have a right, we have a right to also choose to breathe clean air. And if this device turns out to be safe, then we can always undo ordinances. But if this device proves not to be safe, we cannot undo the harms that this would create on the public health.
Mr. Wesson, President of the Council.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I rarely, I mean, I trust you guys and Ms. Martinez. We have great discussions here, and generally, all of you make all of the points, so that means I don't have to just talk to hear myself talk. I'm proud to serve with you, but this is kinda personal, and I feel compelled to say something. I am the number-one smoker on this council. The reason why I started is because I wanted to be cool. I was 20 years old, had a summer gig in a factory, and every three days, four days a week, I'd go into a bar, and I mean bar, just a bar, with the fellas. They'd order a Budweiser, they'd smoke cigarettes, and they'd talk, and it was just so cool. And one guy leans over to me and says, "Young blood, you want a cigarette?" That's how I started, almost 40 years ago. Any way that one can quit, I have probably tried it. I applaud those who smoke these e-cigarettes and are able to transition off of them. I applaud them, but there's nothing that works for everyone. I think what our most important responsibility is, is to take care of those who really aren't at a stage where they can take care of themselves yet, and that's the young people, and I'll get back to that. When I started smoking, there was no damn warning, even though it was a known fact that cigarettes caused problems. There was no warning. And then when we got our first warning, it was something like, cigarette smoke may be hazardous to your health. Even then, because of the lobby in Washington, no one actually could tell the truth. So when I was growing up, the, I didn't know all of these things. With the e-cigarettes, there are studies going on, and who knows when those studies will be complete? But I can tell you this without pause. When you have the younger people that are going, and an exemption for bars, really, you know, they make their money. But if you have one 20-year-old that goes to one of these clubs, and they start smoking e-cigarettes, and they're walking around the house or in their neighborhood, somebody that's 12 is gonna look at that and think it's cool. There are a lot of reasons why people smoke, yeah, your parents may, or your uncle, but I'm telling you, the high percentage of kids that smoke, smoke because it's cool. And when you're 15, you want to be cool. I will not support anything, anything that might attract one new smoker. Now, vote your conscience, and you guys know, I haven't lobbied, I haven't asked, but I can't sit silent on this. This kills. It will probably kill me ultimately. That's dumb, but I tell you, cigarette smoke is more addicting than heroin and these other drugs. You ask any doctor, and that's basically the answer you're gonna get. It's the toughest thing on this planet to quit. Now, I pray, one day before I die, that I will. I just wanna do it, to say that I was able to do it. But we don't need anything that makes a young child say, oh, that's cool, and it tastes like bubble gum, and then next thing you know, that person transitions into a smoker. We have been battling smoking and winning for many, many years. I don't think we wanna stop that momentum. I don't think we want to turn that around. So what I'm saying is that let's think about the children and what we can do to ensure that not one other child smokes. Again, I had to speak because that's just me. You do what you wanna do, and I'm cool with that. I respect that. All of you are bright, I love you, I respect you. But if there was ever something that we shouldn't nitpick on where it relates to facts and statistics or what have you, I would rather stop, and then if the study comes out and says, or the studies, the federal government, hey, guys, you were wrong. There's nothing wrong with this, then we adjust. I'd rather do that now. I don't wanna be a guy that supports smoking may be hazardous to your health, when we know for a fact that smoking is. And I have all due respect for the e-cigarette companies, but I can't stand with you on this one, and I would hope that my members would stand with Mr. O'Farrell on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank my colleagues for the spirited debate and the comments from the public. You know, I share the belief that we don't want to encourage those under 21 to take up what may be bad habits. And so with the rest of my colleagues, I certainly support the ban on e-cigarettes at that age. However, when it comes to those over 21 in a bar or club establishment, I think they should have the choice, especially when the evidence is not conclusive. I think we should be cautious about imposing additional restrictions on our business community when we don't have to, when the science is not clear. And for that reason, I certainly support the general proposition that e-cigarettes should not be accessible and available to youth. However, I do support the amendment as proposed by Council Busciano permitting e-cigarette sales at establishments where, establishments where individuals 21 and over will be. And so, Mr. Chairman, I move the previous question.
Move the previous, a second for the previous question? Second, the question before, but Mr. City Attorney, I know, wanted to, if I could ask the, our guest to vacate for a moment, there's a little protocol issue. We do have a previous question in front of the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I, before I go into my remarks on the substance of what's before you.
Hold on just a second there. We do have a question before us, right there. So I just wanna get the protocol straightened out here.
You can't speak and then do the question.
I want the speaker to speak, but we do have a question called before us, but I.
Yes, I will, I will be concise. I will be concise, Mr. President. First, with regard to, I.
Hold on just a second. The city attorney vacated his chair here, so I'm going on my memory. We did have a previous question, so there's a question before us. Do you object to this courtesy?
Standing in the rules is you, that you cannot call the question after you've spoken. You have to call the question before you speak.
Well, that's a good, that's a good point, too. Okay?
That's correct.
You were out of your seat there, so I was.
I was dealing with a procedural issue, please tell me what's before us.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes.
Mr. City Attorney, what must we do for our rules and regs?
I believe Mr. Parks objected to the calling of the question.
No, Mr. Parks did, yes.
I think, what I'm saying is, I object because I don't think he followed the rules. You can't speak on your issue and then say, I called the question. You have to call the question before you speak.
That is correct.
And today, we have a city attorney here getting ready to speak, which seems, we wouldn't wanna cut him off before he spoke.
Okay, so.
Yes, if, to call the question, you cannot speak on any other part during your time.
Mr. Englander. Whoa, 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 no, I've got, hold it, I'm calling on you next. Michael, go ahead, our city attorney.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First, I wanna, I think I may now have a better understanding of the thrust of Mr. Fuentes' question, and then I wanna talk very briefly to the matter before us. Mr. Fuentes, to be clear, you asked about the county's role. The county could, if it wanted to, as indicated, regulate, but those regulations would pertain to the unincorporated cities within Los Angeles County. The county, the city of Los Angeles is a charter city, has the capacity to act on its own, and indeed, if the county of Los Angeles wanted the city of Los Angeles to adopt a rule like that before us today, it would still require independent action by this body before that would take effect, just so we're clear. Now, I have not yet spoken as city attorney before this body on a substantive issue. This is the first time, and I'm here to do it, part because our office has a tobacco enforcement unit, and we have expertise in this area, and because of my views on the policy that derive from the expertise of our tobacco enforcement unit. I will speak briefly. First, you know, I have an e-cigarette in my hand, we have heard from an array of independent public health experts about the fact that there are toxics in what is emitted from e-cigarettes, and to be precise, there is a study that says that there are carcinogenic elements that are contained, that are related to the nicotine family, that are contained in the emissions from e-cigarettes. We know that there are carcinogens in those emissions, for sure. Second, it is the case that e-cigarettes threaten to normalize the behavior of smoking. There is a Center for Disease Control study that shows in a one-year period of time, a doubling of the use of e-cigarettes among high school students and among middle school students, and at least a fifth of those students had never used tobacco ever. We know that. I wanna speak to the opposition spokesperson's point, because one of the key issues before this body is the amendment by my friend, Mr. Busciano, to exempt bars. And in support of that amendment, the spokesperson for the opposition cited a study from Drexel University. So far, that sounds pretty authoritative, U.N. Book University. One, that study was funded by the e-cigarette industry. Two, that study.
You know, Michael, Mr. City Attorney.
I will speak for one more minute, Mr. President.
But, but what I'm curious about, so hold, definitely, well, he doesn't have time. I think it's, and I know where you're going with this, but I think it's the council's responsibility to direct you where it relates to this issue, and I don't know how appropriate it would be for you to give your opinion prior to our vote on this. So I just wanna make sure I don't get any pushback.
Well, Mr. President, let me be very clear. First, I have spoken to the issue before the committee, which heard this matter as a substantive issue. Secondly, whatever the will of this body is with regard to an ordinance, we will assure that we effectuate that will, irrespective of my views on the issue. The reason I'm speaking at this juncture in the course of the proceeding is merely because Mr. O'Farrell indicated, when did I wanna speak? I said I'd speak after the experts, and it turns out that was in the midst of the debate.
Okay, finish your point.
Yeah, I will finish with these points. There's a lot of discussion about the impact within bars and whether we should exempt bars, and I do wanna say that that Drexel study that purported to, was invoked by the spokesperson for the opposition, that study did not analyze what would happen if you had the cumulative impact of a bunch of people in an enclosed space consuming e-cigarettes. It analyzed the impact of an individual in that setting. Now, as to that amendment, I have a lot of respect for Mr. Busciano, but we disagree on this issue. That amendment. That amendment would fly in the face of all the workplace safety rules we have sought to invoke. It would jeopardize workers within those confined spaces. It would jeopardize customers within those confined spaces. And it'll make enforcement of our existing rules regarding tobacco harder to achieve. I will conclude with this. Other jurisdictions, New York, Boston, and Chicago among them, have adopted rules like those proposed before this council today. None of those cities has an exemption for bars. I would hope the council would stand with the independent experts who have testified before you and whose literature has been disseminated to you, the public health experts, including the top public health expert for the county, the entity with which we contract to get our expertise on health-related issues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Englander?
I'll just call for the question.
Okay, and that--
It should have been done before that testimony.
Mr.-- well, Madam Clerk, so where are we? What's the process we go through at this point?
Mr. President, if there's no objection to calling the question, then council should vote on whether to substitute--
Okay.
So then council should vote on calling the question, and that's a 10 votes are required.
Okay. You don't want to vote on this at this time? Or you-- so you're supporting-- So we've got-- but I understand that. Okay, so let's vote on the call for the question. Let's-- Let's--
And just for clarification, Mr. President, this is for ending debate.
Okay, so anyway, what we will do is we will vote on this, which will end the debate on this issue. Mr. O'Farrell wants a no vote.
I want a no vote, sir.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, eight noes.
We will recognize Mr. Bloomingfield as a no. There was some technical issues.
So, Mr. President, just for the record, that's five yeses, nine noes, and debates can continue.
Mr. Kocoria.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've never taken a puff of a cigarette in my entire life. But when I was growing up, my mom smoked and my dad smoked pretty heavily. And when we drove around in the station wagon with the windows rolled up, all the kids, you know, became smokers, too, not by choice. My mom quit smoking the day that she buried my grandfather, who died from smoking, and she never smoked again. So throughout my life, I've been a strident opponent of cigarette smoking and of the very tobacco companies that have been mentioned a number of times for the horrendous disservice that they've done to this country and to the world through their obfuscating and lying about the evidence about smoking. So I wanted to say that at the outset. And I think that the city has frequently taken the position of discouraging smoking in many capacities, in regulation of what kind of advertising we find acceptable and a variety of other ways. We've tried to make clear that we don't want to encourage the smoking of cigarettes, particularly by young people. But-- and so I'm going to be supportive of efforts to prevent young people from having access to e-cigarettes, young people being exposed to e-cigarettes. When it comes to the amendment that Mr. Buscaino has put forward, I'm struggling with this a little bit because I want to be-- I want to make sure that we are solving a problem based on actual facts and justification. And all of the issues that I talked about, whether it's the de-normalization of smoking that Dr. Fielding mentioned, which is one of the great public policy successes, I think, that we've had in this country, when you see the rates of smoking, how they've declined, and we've been supportive of that here, that's something that we should continue to encourage. Protecting people from secondhand exposure to toxins, in smoke in particular, is something that we should encourage if that's demonstrated. But when it comes to these devices, there, as we've heard today, there's a variety of different views on the impact of what that secondhand vapor may be. There clearly is toxic materials in there, but there's question about the impacts of it. And our City Attorney mentioned the workplace safety issues. But that brings me to Mr. Fuentes's point earlier. The county has taken the lead in public health issues. The county regulates public health issues in our restaurants, for example, restaurants within the city of Los Angeles. This city council has resisted efforts that have been attempted to be imposed upon us by outside entities to regulate workforce, workplace safety in the pornography industry, for example, and in a variety of other contexts. I think that the city is uniquely unsuited to trying to resolve scientific and factual issues of workplace safety. That's why we have a Cal OSHA. That's why we have an FDA. That's why we have scientists who work in regulatory agencies to depoliticize these sorts of questions, so that these aren't questions that are resolved by the legislative process based on who, you know, speaks more loudly about a topic, but rather actually by scientists who examine the evidence. And that, for example, when I was in the state legislature and served with the City Attorney, we frequently had bills that came up involving banning of chemicals. And it became clear that the legislature was uniquely unsuited to deciding those chemical issues. And the City Attorney took a leadership role, which I admired greatly, a courageous role, in saying, "Why don't we step back from this and examine it with a regulatory body of scientists?" And it was his Green Chemistry Initiative that was an important piece of progress in the legislative work of this state. I don't want to see a situation where every issue of toxic exposure, every issue of workplace safety begins to become an issue that this council is going to have to take up because we don't know how to do that. We don't have staff to do that. We don't have a health department in the city of Los Angeles. So I'm really concerned if we start down the road of trying to address workplace safety issues and those sorts of things. There's a well-developed body of evidence on smoking. There's a well-developed body of evidence on the exposure of young people to the advertising of smoking. So for all those reasons, I'm so supportive of Mr. O'Farrell's efforts to get this influence on our young people out of our city. But from everything I've heard so far, I don't think the case has been made that adult exposure, like in the types of situations Mr. Buscaino is talking about, should be something that this council acts on absent regulation by one of these agencies that actually does know how to do this, like the county, like the FDA, like Cal OSHA, like many other agencies that are actually equipped to be able to make those difficult assessments. So if the FDA comes out with those sorts of regulations, then by all means, we should respond. But I just-- I can't see that the case has been made that we should be acting in an area of science relating to a part of our city that is not exposed to young people. So I haven't heard anything to be able to make that case. So I'm going to be supportive of the amendment. Regardless of that amendment, I am going to be supportive of Mr. O'Farrell's efforts to try to regulate.
Mr. Kocoria, thank you. Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to comment on the county. The county does have the role of providing health services, but it's not historically always the gutsiest entity. If we were still waiting for the county to regulate cigarettes, we would still be waiting. And I don't feel bad that the city of Los Angeles, as unsuited as it is to make health decisions, led the way on tobacco regulation, which spread across the state of California and the country, and ultimately, all over the world. As unsuited as we were, we knew we had to take the step. And there's no question, that action ultimately saved thousands and thousands of lives. My fear is that not only are we not going to protect the health of Los Angelinos as much as we could, we're going to be the one city, for now, that takes the step of passing an ordinance like this without the full protections. And that we will actually provide momentum for weakening this kind of legislation across the country. Having done the opposite with tobacco, having been ultimately the worldwide leader on an issue where you could argue we shouldn't have meddled, but that meddling saved thousands and thousands of lives across the country and across the world. I don't want us to be the one example of a weaker regulation of e-cigarettes that we find out five years from now, or 10 years from now, or 15 years from now was absolutely the wrong step to take.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you. Okay, I got one last question, and it's actually to someone who supports the amendment. I've been struggling about this amendment all day. And my first question is, well, why not exempt places that are over 21? But now I'm looking at it from the opposite. Why exempt them? If we're going to exempt bars, people that are over 21, why is that any different from any other workplace? Now, I'm wondering what the logical argument is for just bars? And if someone who is supportive of that amendment can answer that.
State the question again real quick.
Joe, I'm wondering what the logical argument is for exempting bars but not other workplaces as well?
Right.
If there's not sufficient evidence to say that it's harmful to someone standing in a bar, why would we also not say you can have it in a workplace?
Because clearly-- and again, we agree with the fact that we don't want to expose our children and youth to cigarette, e-cigarette. But allowing-- kids are not allowed. They're not able to enter a bar in establishment that's over 21 and older.
Very well. Thank you. Hold on, I got it.
Mr. Tom Labons? Question. Okay. Now, Mr. City Attorney, the vote is for ending the debate at this point, correct? Okay. Okay. Without objection, that'll be the order, or must we vote on it? So there are no objections. So now, what are we voting on, and what's the sequence of voting?
Mr. President, first, council should vote on whether to substitute 35A, the ordinance attached to 35A for the original ordinance as indicated on the agenda.
Okay, so on this item, Mr. Buscaino is asking for an "aye" vote. Mr. O'Farrell is asking for a "no" vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, eight noes.
Okay, now, we actually vote on--
On 35A, the ordinance as indicated on the agenda.
Okay, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, that's passes. Mr. Englander?
Fourth with, sir.
Fourth with? Mr. Labons, if you could take the chair.
Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number 36, call special for cards.
Just real quick for our guest, the matter did pass. And now we're going on to other business as proposed.
This is only my second minute. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. E-cigarettes abajo. Number 36 concerns Mentone Avenue and the northwest corner of it. Vacation and substantial conformance. We're in favor of this, and we're against. The six members of the city council who voted in favor of cancer. You're shameful.
Okay, no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll on 36. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thirteen ayes. Next item.
Item nine?
Thirty-seven, please. Thirty-seven. Please call 37.
Item 37, call special for cards.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, or tweeting at Hollywood Dems. The first time I set foot on Hollywood Boulevard Walk of Fame was 1966. It was in great shape then. This concerns Kate Winslet and the installation of her star. We're, of course, totally in favor of that. Remember, the city doesn't own the Hollywood Walk of Fame. That's a nonprofit governed by the state. The conditions on Hollywood Walk of Fame and the conditions of the stars are horrible. We put them on our website, and if you think-- some of the stars are torn up. And where is the money going? Millions of dollars go in, but the stars are in terrible, terrible condition. Some of them just only two or three years old. Part of it had to do with metro construction, but that's long since gone. Kate Winslow's star forever.
Okay, no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item. Number nine. Let the clerk answer, please, Mr. Buscaino.
Item number nine, called special by Councilor Buscaino.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Today, colleagues, this item before you, I rise and ask for your "aye" vote in support of the Ponte Vista San Pedro specific plan and related ordinances before you. I believe that this project and this long-range development plan will transform an abandoned naval housing site and current eyesore into a thriving residential neighborhood that will provide new housing stock that's appropriate for my proud seaside community. This project has an almost 10-year history that spans two councilmatic administrations. It began in the early years of 2000s as a 2,300-unit mix-use urban village on a hill over the years, and through the recession has become a master-planned residential suburban neighborhood that embodied in the plan that is before us. Again, we started out this project years ago with 2,300 units, and today, at 676 units, it's a fraction of the size that was originally proposed. It will have publicly accessible walking and jogging paths, recreation centers, and a variety of for-sell housing types that speak to the current generation of homebuyers. In addition to the critical mitigation measures for traffic and other impacts that will be imposed as a result of the environmental review process, the project applicant has agreed to a number of additional community benefits, including a permanent access road from Western Avenue to Mary Star High School, a project labor agreement with the Building Trades Council, a local hire program facilitated through the city's WorkSource Center, and PV jobs. Streetscape improvements on Western Avenue. A two-and-a-half-acre park along Western Avenue. Thank you to the neighborhood council to put that push for that. The two-and-a-half-acre park along Western Avenue, designed, constructed, and operated by the developer and the subsequent homeowner association, but fully accessible to the public-- public. I want to thank all the stakeholders, the Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council, community leaders, the folks who are here who supported the project. Please stand up and show us that you're here. Thank you very much for leading this effort. And of course, I want to recognize not only the stakeholders before you, colleagues, but also the Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council for making this a better project. It's long overdue. We have waited for this moment. I ask for your "I" vote for this incredible project for my district, and looking forward to moving forward on it. Thank you.
Mr. Buscagino, thank you for your leadership on this. Is that Ms. Mendoza right there, I spot there?
Yes, Irene.
Travelled the San Pedro Freeway all the way up here. Good job. No speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen "yes."
Well, send that matter forth with, Mr. Buscagino. Next item.
Item 38, call special for cards.
Sean Murphy. Is Sean Murphy still here? Get up here, Sean.
Yes, item 38. I'm for it, but where's the Victory Corridor project? We've been waiting for it since 2008.
Thank you, Sean. John Walsh, thank you.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or JWalshConfidential.wordpress.com, or just blog John Walsh, and you get me. And this concerns Ray Parker's installation of Ray Parker. Now, I don't know who Ray Parker is, but you know what? That's what's great about the Hollywood Walk of Fame. You learn about people that you didn't know about, and I'm sure that Ray Parker Jr. belongs on the Hollywood Walk of Fame, but he deserves a star that doesn't fall apart because the way you're making these stars now out of crappy material. Well, it's a good day. This was the most divided City Council I've seen in four years. Cancer almost won. We beat cancer nine to six. HollywoodHighlands.org.
So no speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve "yes."
So ordered. Next item.
Item 39, call special for cards.
Mr. Walsh, you have a card in 39?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is a vacation, as in vacating something, of North Main Street. Usually, this means that it's being given over to a private developer. We'll look into this, but HollywoodHighlands.org, and come to our website, and stay tuned for public comment. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org.
No speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve "yes."
Okay, next item.
Item number 40, call special for cards.
Mr. Walsh, pass. No speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve "yes."
Twelve "yes." What's before us now, Madam Clerk?
Item one, call special for cards.
One, called special by cards. Would the speaker who filled the card out approach on item one?
I'm not speaking on a particular topic. I'm speaking on my own son's...
Okay, all right. Thank you, ma'am. Item one, is anyone here on item one? We have one card right here. Sean Murphy. John Walsh. Pass for Mr. Walsh. Thank you, ma'am. Vacate the speakers area, please. Mr. Murphy.
Have a seat. She on the card? No card.
Mr. Murphy, your turn is up. Sergeant, ask the lady to come to the side, and you can work with it.
If it's a lien against this, I'm against this.
All right, I have one other card, a 1C. Is that your interest, ma'am? 1C?
I'm not speaking on...
I'm asking the woman who was just sitting there, Ramon. I apologize. Sagan, do you have no card, ma'am? Sergeant, could you help me here?
It's Castillo. Last name would be Castillo.
Thank you. Thank you. You want to speak, ma'am? State your name.
Raina Castillo, and I'm coming on regards to the 1602 Adams property. That property, my husband and I bought it some 30 years ago, and he died a few years ago, and he died a few years ago, and my adult children inherited, and I've been helping them because they're out of the country right now. And what happened was that there are two tenants, tenant A and tenant B, and the tenant A, tenant A, he didn't pay the second inspection in 2010, and we owe that much with a penalty. And Unit B, in 2010, everything happened in 2010. In 2010, I had to go to Barcelona because my son had cancer, so I had to be with him, and then I kind of, you know, I kept asking them, the tenant, if he had paid 10, 11, and 12, and he hadn't paid it yet. So that's when they want to put a lien on the property, and I'm willing to pay, but I was just pleading if you could reduce the penalties. I'm willing to pay whatever it is, but maybe if you could help me reduce the penalties.
Good. All right, thank you very much. Representative Billian Safety on the public speaker's comments, I believe it's on Adams Boulevard, is that correct?
Yeah, that's absolutely right. Morning. My name is Charles Calibala. I'm representing the Department of Building and Safety for Item 1L. The department believes that and proposes that a lien for $6,307.54 be confirmed on this property for failure to pay annual inspection invoices. The actual lien breaks down as follows. The property owner owes annual inspection invoices of $2,083, system development charge of $130, late fee of $2,750, non-comp 1100, totaling to $6,307. And the department believes that the property owner, having failed to pay these inspection fees, needs to pay it right away.
Recommended by the Department of Building and Safety, so there's no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve "yes."
That has been ordered. You have any questions, you can talk to the Representative Billian Safety on the side. Thank you for your comment. Now, Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, also for item 1C, there was a request to continue that item to March 25th.
That's without objection. Next item.
Mr. President, that takes counsel to general public comment.
Great. General public comment right now. Harriet Elliott?
I live at 716 South Berendo. Above me is not a pedophile priest, but a priest who is a sex worker. There's no defamation if it's true. Is this a coincidence that I, as a Marxist, am next to this man and have to hear him leave a couple of times every night? If you read Whitey Bulger, you'll find out the FBI left pedophile priests in place. It's not a coincidence I never got a call from the deputy of Bernard Parks. I respect very highly Bernard Parks, but I never got a call. I'm talking about my son's death 20 years ago, and we needed help. I went to his office, district office on Crenshaw, and they said they couldn't help me. So I came in here and went to his office in City Hall, and I remember Mike Hernandez, and they wouldn't let me talk to him. It's not a coincidence. My next-door neighbor told me that his best outfit for looking for jobs was stolen out of his house. I know many people wouldn't believe that. However, I know it's true because I have been harassed so much since my son died that I realized that my son didn't die of what the police reports stated. That's when I became suspicious. I also want you to help me out because when somebody believes me, a Chinese librarian in Atwater, in Glendale, not close to Glendale, I lived on Los Feliz Boulevard, and I went to the Glendale Library and the Atwater Library, and he believed my story, and now he's gone. I don't know, did he... If you can, please help me, someone. Find that Chinese librarian. Yeah, he went to McGill University and told me he knew that the CIA does these things.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or at JWalshConfidential. This was the most divided City Council I've seen in years. Why was it divided? Because of the alcohol lobby in cahoots with the smoking lobby, two major lobbies. They pulled six politically correct votes into fascism, and that's powerful because this is the most politically correct body. When I hear somebody like Krikorian say, "What about the rights of smokers? What about the rights in a bar of an 18-year-old kid in the restaurant who's picking up and cleaning your glasses and serving you food, and this vaping goes into the body, into their lungs?" I must say, you used to have the courage... Mr. Krikorian used to have the courage of his convictions. My last bit of respect has disappeared, and the irony is that Herb Wesson is in the back smoking because he's addicted to smoking, and everybody knows that. I don't have the exact vote. I know that three of the people who voted in favor of exposing 18-year-olds to cancer... Well, I mean, Buscagino, he's a Republican. He doesn't count. As far as price is concerned, foul, utterly foul. Black lungs, full of cancer, thanks to your white mouth. You belong to the white power structure of the big law. Big nicotine is white, and big alcohol is white, and you belong to that group. I'll get the rest of you that voted for, and we'll hold you up on our website for contempt. This was the best vote we've had in the city in a long time, and it shows who the politically correct fascists are. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Anyways, it's difficult for Miriam to get here. It made it more difficult due to asthma. And for her and many other disabled people in the San Fernando Valley, I ask, is there any lawyer, it's watching Channel 35, help these people bring back the video conferencing on consignment? Is ADA violation having it closed? Reopening is the right thing to do, and will make a name for yourself. City Council doesn't care about the San Fernando Valley, and doesn't care about the constituents. Bloomingfield, Nury, why aren't you getting it reopened? Nury, you approved $55 million for the CRA project to finish the CRA projects. We have a drought, and we have these CRA projects, we don't have enough water for it. Certainly, it's a drop in the bucket to bring back the video conferences, a drop in the bucket. I'm also angry about discontinuing the 761 bus goes from Van Nuys to Westwood and giving us smaller buses on Sepulveda. MTA wants expensive rail projects with possible CRA projects on Van Nuys Boulevard. It will hurt Van Nuys Boulevard businesses, the cars will go away, and people won't be there. So we need to stop, we need us... We can't discontinue the 761 bus, and we can't bring along expensive rail project. In the meantime, they won't let us have our video conferencing. There's a lot of thousands and thousands of voices in the San Fernando Valley that need to speak. In the meantime, we still allow that $55 million for the CRA projects. It's wrong. And lastly, I just want to say, I don't think the vaping is bad as traditional cigarettes, so therefore you just brought back traditional cigarettes, big time.
Last speaker of public comment on this date, Sean Murphy.
Yes, good afternoon. Yeah, it's afternoon. Had a look at my watch. MTA discussed some issues at Thursday's MTA Board meeting. They talked about the expanding of the Purple Line from Wilshire and Western, all the way I used to hang out when I was a teenager in Westwood Village. All in favor were, said I. They're still talking about the fare increase. I want to remind them, there's a meeting on March 29th about the fare increase. I got a flyer, but I forgot to bring it. Their phone number is on the flyer. Mark Ridley-Thomas and Eric Garcetti. You could call them and say no about the fare increase. Come the nights of Columbus, a week from Saturday, we're going to have a pro-life march. I'm asking the council people from the Valley to please come walk with us. It's against abortion. I'm asking Paul Corretts, Neri and Martinez, my council member, Krikorian, you, Tom, to please come out and join us in March, Walk Against Abortion. It's Saturday, March 15th, a week from Saturday. If you have any questions, give me a call on my home phone. Thanks.
That completes our public comment for this date. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that we reconsider 1G for the purpose of delaying that for one week.
Very good. So vote on reconsideration. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve "yes."
Twelve "yes." That's before us right now, one week continuance.
Yes, due to the recess, that's March 18th.
March, it will be past the recess, over a week. Very well. We vote on that, Patrice?
You can do that without objection.
Without objection. Mr. Bloomingfield?
Yeah, I'd like to ask for item 41 to go forth with, please.
Item 41 to go forth with.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, Council has motions for postponement referral.
So ordered.
That clears the desk.
Clears the desk. Any announcements, members? Any announcements? I will now ask for Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just very pleased to be able to announce that many of you know my planning director, Caro Torosian. Caro and his wife last week had a baby, Adut Eric Torosian, who was born on February 20th, weighing in at seven pounds, 11 ounces. Mother and child are doing very well. Jury's still out on Dad, but he is back at work and doing good work for the people of the city of Los Angeles, so I just wanted to congratulate Caro and his wife and wish them well.
Thank you very much. No other announcements? We do have adjourned motions. All rise for adjourned motions. We all rise, and we call on Mr. Buscagino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Florence Simeoni, also known as Flossy. She passed away peacefully on Sunday, February 23rd, at the age of 85, surrounded by her loving family. Flossy was born February 21st, 1929, in New Jersey, and at the age of 14, she moved to California with her family and lived in San Pedro for the past 71 years. She was preceded in death by her husband, Sam Simeoni, who passed in 2011. Auntie Flo, as I called her, was our neighbor growing up on Alma Street. She taught me the importance of the loving thy neighbor. She taught me the importance of respecting your elders. I'll never forget my sisters and I bringing flowers to her, and she rewarded us by giving us cookies and goodies. She will truly be missed. She was survived by her three loving sons, Mike, Bruce, and Sam, along with her brother-in-law, Eugene Simeoni. She's also survived by seven grandchildren, one great-granddaughter, her sisters. She's also survived by seven grandchildren, one great-granddaughter, her sisters Carl Randanich, Gladys, Janet, along with her nephew, nieces, cousins, and numerous aunts, numerous friends, that is. Visitation was held at Green Hills Mortuary this past Sunday with a memorial service where my family and I attended yesterday. May Auntie Flo rest in peace.
Members, I ask for adjourned memory of Bill Burnage, who served the city of Los Angeles so many years as a Los Angeles firefighter. He was very special. I remember in my early days of working with the city, he worked in the Hollywood area, then in later years, he also volunteered after retirement at the Los Angeles City Fire Museum at Old 27th. Bill Burnage. Every day's a blessing. Go serve the city well. Be safe out there, and have a good afternoon. This meeting's adjourned.